We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for June 6, 2017, 4:30 PM. Order first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What you wish is on them?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion of second approved to consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
Just to count one comment, Mr. President, I know our city manager's finished up his one year as president of the Minnesota City County Managers Association. Was that three, four hundred members, Brian?
Yeah, about two hundred and twenty-five.
Two twenty-five. So, thank you for your time on that. Anytime you become president of those associations, their work, I know that, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, consider motion approving the fireworks license for the American Promotional Events Incorporated, TNT Fireworks Incorporated.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2B, consider motion approving issuance of temporary on sale liquor permit for Safer Benji, permit, can't even say it.
Bianchi.
Bianchi, American Legion Post, 132.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We got a motion of second. Any discussion?
For an event at Riverside Park, um, July 3rd.
No more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2C, consider motion approving issuance of general licenses for the period beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. That's for tobacco fireworks, kennel, mechanical amusement, sheep, solid waste hauler, taxi cab, and tree service.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion of second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, number one, consider resolution approving with one condition, a request from Leon Crawford for a simple lot division of the property located at 310 20th North Street.
I'd just like to add, the planning commission met, we recommended approval with conditions for, and the condition was to plot it with the Brown County Recorder.
With that, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving with the one condition as stated on here.
Second. We got a motion of second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3A, number two, consider resolution approving the application for shade Schmidt, requesting a conditional use permit to place a special purpose fence on the property located at 626 South Franklin Street.
Again, the planning commission recommended approval. The fence was actually put up before, and it was caught, you know, after it was put up, and we looked at it, but if you look at your packet, you'll see that the topography of the lot, it's a lower sunk lot, and we, we recommended unanimously approving it.
With the planning commission's unanimous recommendation, I'll motion to offer resolution, waive the reading, approving with the conditions.
Second.
We got a motion of second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
So, this was a fence that was put up after, put up, and then there was an application, so.
Correct, because he wasn't.
So, there's no penalty for that? There's no, you can just, ask for permission later.
To make a comment on that, fences are.
It's a unique situation.
Fences are very unique. I mean, people will come in, they, we requested drawing, a lot of times the topography isn't on it, they just say, yes, my fence is going to be forty-eight inches high in the front yard. Building official issues, the permit goes out, and the yard goes at a forty-five degree angle. It's situations like that, and when I drove by, that, I know we've issued these before with topography issues, granted.
You know, it does meet the requirements for the front yard, for the height, if you're at the sidewalk level, you know, the way our ordinance explains it.
The city does have a policy in effect, if somebody does start a project, you can charge them double. You're not a popular department anyway, so normally, we didn't charge them double. That's.
You know, and, you know, the homeowner's trying to improve his property, and it's on a corner lot, and he's trying to pick a patio area in privacy, you know, enhance it, so.
Just curious. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none. Do we have a resolution?
Yep.
Okay. No more discussion. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3B, number one, consider a variance request of the First Choice Pregnancy Services to place a ten-foot by ten-foot storage shed three feet from the side property line at 1223 South Broadway.
And again, I would like to add that the Board of Zoning and Adjustment recommended approval of the request with conditions, and the conditions, they would like to stay three feet off the property line, and then the condition is to put in a fire resistant wall facing their neighbor's building. And it's a unique situation, you know, they need as much parking as they can, and they need storage, and it's.
Don't see that condition added on part of our, that just get missed in our report?
Ah, it should be line item two.
There it is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it is there, item two.
And they were aware of it, and the neighbors were okay with it also.
So, no complaints by the neighbors or anything?
No.
Okay. I'm going to offer the motion, or to accept the variance request.
Second.
We got a motion of a second to accept the request. Any more discussion?
This is at 1223 South Broadway, ten-by-ten storage shed.
It is with conditions?
With conditions, excuse me, yes. Thank you.
No more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 2B, number two, consider an application of Christopher Schrader requesting a variance from the city code to allow a storage shed addition to be located within six feet of the rear sided property line at 21 Camelsback Road.
I think, Charlie, that was six inches.
Six inches, sorry. Not six feet.
And again, Board of Zoning Adjustment recommended approval of the request. If you look previously in 1980, there was a variance to grant it, previously, and the shed, he wants to add an addition onto the shed for storage reasons. It's not going to come out past the front of the existing home. There were no complaints from any of the neighbors. The alley is vacated, and it's a unique situation, again.
I don't know, we don't have too many of these six inches next to a property line.
No, but the nearest building is seventy-five feet away from it, too, from the neighbors, for the backyard, for the fence, on that aspect. That's, and, you know, they run a daycare, and they've got a lot of bicycles and trikes and bouncy things, and it's a special need, you know, circumstances.
With that, I'm going to offer the motion to accept the variance application.
Second.
We got a motion of a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 4A, consider motion to receive a survey information from HANU regarding the potential use of the rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Fourth South and Broadway. Cindy.
Cindy Winters, the Heart of New Ulm Project, and President Council Members, thanks for inviting me back and allowing me to provide you with the information that we found out as a result of asking parents, asking New Ulm residents that live in the area whether they would use a, an RRFB located at South Fourth Street or not. So, during our conversations in your packet, you also have a student density map that was created by the Region 9 Development Commission, and this map was developed using all of the addresses that the public school, private school, Nuax, and St. Paul's Elementary School gave to Region 9 Development Commission so that they could identify where students live in New Ulm. And on the map also is a darker line for where Fourth, Fourth South Street is, so you know where that potential light would go. And then, as far as asking residents input, a survey was developed, and a link to the survey was sent to all of the school districts as well, and the school sent it out to the parents through their newsletter. And then, hard copies were made and mailed to residents whose addresses didn't show up on the school address list, that lived in the area, that would potentially use that crossing. I didn't mail to people north of the city or up on top of the hill, but people that lived in the area. And so, and you have a list of the questions, so, and it was mailed out to about thirteen hundred, hard copies were mailed out to individuals in the community as well. So, two hundred and eighty-nine people completed portions of the survey. Some questions were skipped, and I don't know the way the hard copy came out, the description of the survey, and a picture of what the light would look like was on the first page, and the first question was at the very bottom of the page, and I think some people may have missed that. So, seventeen people missed that question, but two hundred and sixty-eight answered it, and of those, one hundred and six people said that they would use the light, and a hundred and thirty-eight said no, and twenty-four said that they would maybe use it. And that was to let their kids, them themselves use it, or their kids use it to walk to school. And then, we asked questions about getting to different amenities on either side of South Broadway Street. So, the first question, the second question we asked was, would you use it to get to amenities on the east side of South Broadway, such as the dog park, St. Mary's Church, downtown daycare, et cetera. And two hundred and eighty-three people answered this question, one hundred and eleven said that they would use it, and a hundred and thirty-five said no, and thirty-seven people said maybe. And question number three was, would you use a pedestrian activated light to get to amenities on the west side of the street, such as the schools, library, hospital, parks and recreation, and daycare? And two hundred and seventy-eight people answered this question, a hundred and fifteen people said that they would use it, a hundred and thirty-seven people said no, and twenty-six people said maybe. And then, we just asked different questions about what other intersections in town would prevent them from walking or biking because of speed of traffic, and then, we also asked about streets and speed for further use for the safe routes to school, team, and what we want to work on to improve safety around walking and biking to school.
Anybody have any questions with Cindy?
Mr. President, I think when I was one of the counselors that asked for more information before we would move forward on looking at a light in this direction, and at that time, we didn't really have a lot of data on would anybody use this crossing, and we're going to build something and hope people would come. What I appreciated from this survey was a couple things. One that said, was probably the last, yeah, the last question that we have on this survey, that what streets are you most hesitant to cross, and Broadway was the number one per, um, street, which is, it's a fast street, there's a lot of industrial traffic zipping by going on that. Then also, the, we come in like second, if I remember correctly, on, the kids don't like to cross, certainly with Garden and Center being the number one one, because there's a lot of traffic there, but.
Right.
So, I appreciate this survey. I think it helps move this project forward, in my opinion, so, thank you.
Cindy, did you have any information on how often they would use it?
No, that wasn't one of the questions. We didn't ask that.
I didn't, you know, I had a number of people that couldn't talk to me afterwards, and people that jog, people that run, people that bike, that want to cross in that, in that general area, and they said, you want an opinion? I would like a safe crossing there, so, whether it's adult, not just for kids, but also for adults that want to cross in that area as well. And then, with the addition of the dog park being in that area, along with the other parks, you know, we got the skate park and the BMX park down in that general region and general area that have little folks who run in across that street that would certainly make that a little safer in that direction as well, too. So, I'm going to offer a motion to receive the survey information regarding potential use of the rectangular flashing beacon on Broadway and South Fourth Street.
Second. We got a motion of second. Any more discussion?
And going back when we were looking at this, this was for five years down the road, wasn't it? I think it was 2021, so.
Yeah, 2021, yeah.
You know, so, just kind of.
So, we're not making a decision today, we're just approving, receiving the report, survey.
I think that's step one of their process that they need to move forward on.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Cindy.
Mm-hmm.
Item 4B, consider resolution approving installation of a bicycle friendly signage at eight roadway entrances to the city, subject to authorization of the roadway authorities. Cindy.
So, Cindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project. I was asked to, to ask the city council's permission to, to purchase the bicycle friendly designation signs, and the signs don't designate what level you're at, so that they can be used if a community continues to move up or stays at a level. The signs are good for four years, and there are currently eight entrances into the community, and it would be really help promote the community and help, I think, tourism as well, to promote that we are a bicycle friendly community and have made some efforts to improve bicycling. And bicycling tourism is a huge industry in the state of Minnesota.
You have the map there. Do you want to put that on the overhead so the public can see where they're looking at proposing?
This map printed out much larger than what, so, it's all the. All the red dots are the proposed entrances to the community. And the state highway, the trunk highways, there is, there is a limit, that you can only have three signs on your, on those entrance signs, and right now, there's currently only two signs on there. I went and took a picture of all of them. So, there's the Fit City and the Tree City signs are on those entrance signs.
So, basically, just on the entrances to our community.
Mm-hmm.
So, with that, I'll offer resolution approving installation of bike friendly signage at eight roadway entrances to the city, subject to authorization from roadway authorities.
Second. We got a motion of second, offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
What?
A question I would have would be really for the city engineer's office, is who's going to do the paperwork on the state and the county?
Uh, Mr. President, we will, we will contact MNDOT, as well as the Brown County Engineer. Not certain if there's a permit process with either of them, but I wanted to make sure that this moved forward from here before, before I went to them. I think we probably need to update our Tree City signs at the same time, because they were all a little different, so, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
Anything else? Seeing nothing. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4C, consider resolution to continue Phase One shero routes and to implement Phase Two routes.
Mr. President, um, last, let's see, when I saw, last May, I believe, you, the city council approved a Phase One shero route that was installed by the street department personnel last year, and then, I think in July, there was another presentation of a Phase Two through Phase Five, and you've got that map attached to your agenda, or to your items. At that time, the routes were just received, they weren't technically ordered in, so we wanted to come back to the city council. There is some maintenance costs that are involved with not only the initial installation, but also the annual maintenance cost, so, every time you add one of these routes, we're having the street department go out and use paint and personnel, probably to the tune of about $6,000 for the initial setup and about five for the repaint. So, there is a cost associated with it. If you want us to move ahead with repainting Phase One, we'll do that, and if you want to order in Phase Two, we can do that as well. There's a map, Phase Shero routes attached there.
Since we have Mr. Curry here, could I ask him a couple questions on, because last year was new, we weren't just going into this, and I'd like to hear how all that went, and problems or no problems, or can you kind of give us your input?
Well, no, we did the first phase last year, a hundred and eighty-eight charos. It took us roughly two and a half weeks of painting to do it, the tune of sixty-three something, I believe it was, sixty-five. Like Mr. Kaler stated, to repaint will be a little faster as we don't have to set up the, measure off the curb and set the stencil. That's already done, we just have to put it on top of the existing one.
There's some question about how long, some of them still look like they're in pretty good shape, and I know we were worried about what the salt would do to them over the winter months. Of course, we didn't have a really bad winter this time around, so we didn't use a lot of salt and sand.
Correct.
That's probably why some still look pretty good, so do all of them really need to be repainted?
No, they don't all need to be repainted, but they're really going to stick out if we.
If you don't.
If we don't, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that dollar cost, is that labor cost?
That is correct.
So, it was still, it wasn't new staff brought in to pay, or that you paid, or was it?
No, there was not.
So, it was not new staff hired? So, these were current employees, anyway?
That is correct.
That were on the payroll?
Yes.
So, okay, so, they were, they had a shift of duties, more or less?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
One item I do want to bring to the public's attention, though, it's always the long haul down the road when these are all installed, who's going to pay for them? The projection here, you want $20,000 plus per year painting cost to redo them, just so they're aware of that when budget time comes. When you're looking at twenty grand a year, just seal coat roads, they have to be done, wear and tear, just to mention that.
I'd like to maybe add that currently, we're, we're funding this with a grant that they received last year.
But.
So, I mean, after this year, it's done, so.
As normal, when grants run out, the city picks the tab up.
So.
How much is the paint, you know, of the $6,000, what, how much was the paint current?
I don't know if I brought that with me. The paint was roughly, oh, five hundred, I'm going to guess.
It's a special kind of paint, if I remember right, our conversation about that.
It is. It's, it's traffic marking paint, the same we do with crosswalks and, and parking stalls, et cetera. You know, one thing to consider, we can, if we go to another phase, we're going to have to get another metal stencil, which is about $600, which we can do, we had it made in town. We bought a new paint machine to replace the old one that we had, and when we kept the old one. So, we're going to have to have two paint crews grow out, and we can absorb that, one more phase. What if we do any more than one more phase, we're going to need another crew. If I have to do all of these eventually, we're not going to be able to do it in-house. We're going to have to add.
Farm it out.
Well, or add seasonals, yes.
Makes sense.
I guess I'd like to maybe add, I had somebody approach me and ask if we could be considering to put signage in for long-term, so we're not just doing the painting, if, you know, for, in the community.
That's what I was just going to suggest, too.
Just, I'm just.
Because they would last a heck of a lot longer if we put a sign.
And then, we had to spend $20,000, you know, there's.
Did we have that?
Signage purchase.
Is that a discussion, Ms. Winters, when we talked about that last year? Do you remember our, why we didn't go that route, or, I know there was discussion in that area?
Cindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project. Part of what charos do is they also indicate where you're supposed to be writing, in the, in, on the street, like what direction, because I have seen people writing in town against traffic, even on a street that has charos. So, we, we do have a lot of education yet to do, and that's in the plan for the, for the Safe Routes to School program. And it also lets the, the writer know when they're writing on a street that has parking, which almost all these streets have parking along them, where to ride if there's a car parked along the street to stay out of the door zone, so they don't get doored, because you can have some really severe injuries if you're writing and not paying close attention to whether someone's in the car and getting, and getting out of the car. So, and it's also kind of more of a visual cue to the driver for them to slow down and expect, I know you expect to see bicyclists around, along that route. You would see that with the sign, but it's, because you don't see a lot of markings on the street, it's more of a visual than a signage, because signage can sometimes get lost with all the other signs that are out there.
Got a question.
Mm-hmm.
You, are the people on bicycles supposed to drive right where the markings are?
They can, they don't have to, but if there is a car parked, then they should ride with those, along those charos.
I'm just going to make a statement.
Okay.
And it was shortly after we painted the first ones, I was going down Garden Street, and for three blocks, there was this senior citizen ahead of me, and he was going on the shero, and there was no one car on the outside. There was four cars behind me, cars coming, and you think he'd move over? No. We need education.
Well, and, yeah.
I'll tell you the truth, the young people that we worry about getting in accidents, they're the most courteous drivers there are. It's the people my age and above that are the worst in this town. It's terrible.
Yeah, we are, we do have a plan to do some education this fall.
What, I know we mentioned this grant, two-year grant, is that renewable? Is that, is that a potential renewable?
For the, oh, that you received from the Heart of New Ulm Project? So, that was part of the Lose It To Win It campaign, and that's with the community funds that were raised, so we will not have another campaign like that to raise, to put towards them.
Okay, just curious.
Yep.
So, we should take advantage of what we got, at least in the interim, so, I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, to continue the Phase One shero routes and implement Phase Two.
Second.
We got a motion of a second, approve Phase Two. Any more discussion?
And I think just down the road, as, as some of the counselors mentioned, to look at, you know, what fiscal impact will this be in year three and four, when, if we don't have any reimbursement, so, are there some other options? Are there some fundraising opportunities from the bicycler folks in town, and take a look at that?
Think they maybe know what other communities are doing, if they're doing charos throughout their community also, or.
Oh, there's a lot of metro, metro areas that are all charos.
Or metro, but, you know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Or more rural.
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit.
We have a motion of a second, offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4D, consider request from William Swan on behalf of milk associated milk producers incorporated to amend the resolution number 0302, authorizing the vacation of the T Alley in Block 20 North of Center Street. Brian?
Well, if you look at the information presented to you, you'll note that a vacation had been approved earlier with. Well, if you look at the information presented to you, you'll note that a vacation had been approved earlier with conditions. Those conditions were not completed, therefore the vacation didn't go through. I was contacted by Mr. Swan on behalf of AMPI, asking if, if and what they need to do in order to see that vacation through. That was passed along to the Community Development Director, and this is the results. Is that we would need to amend resolution number 03-02. And then if the current owner of the property completes all the, or all the requirements, then the vacation will be concluded.
Now, being that past councils have gone through all the work, I'll motion to offer resolution, waive the reading, to amend resolution number 03-02, authorizing the vacation of the T Alley in Block 20 north of Center Street with the conditions.
Second.
We got a motion in the second, offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 4E, consider future use of the Putting Green facility. Tom Schmitz.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and councillors, we are looking for a little more insight as to what your desire is for the future of the Putting Green site. Putting Green Incorporated desires a new lease, operate the community garden. And according to the present lease, the City Council has the authorization to require them to eliminate everything else, everything on the site and restore it to conditions prior to their arrival. So you have a lot of information on the action form, and I know we have representatives here from Putting Green. If there's any questions specifically to them, I think the community garden is an asset, as we previously discussed.
Any comments, concerns?
I got a few. I was out there on Saturday, went up to the Putting Green, and I was a little bit saddened by that there was not very many lots or plots being, being used out there. Maybe I'm wrong or not, but I only saw less than half. It looks like the ones that were, actually had some, something planted in them. Is that true? Am I, did I just not see that? Maybe it's a lot of potatoes that haven't came up yet, or? But it sure didn't look like there was a lot out there. I was kind of bummed.
We are too. Tracy Veranis, Executive Director of Putting Green. So, yes, this year, for a variety of reasons, our number of gardeners has severely declined. And I, the gardeners, I have a relationship with most of the gardeners, and I talk to them, and I've heard different things. Some of them have purchased homes, so we were successful in that they garden there, and they like gardening, and now they're going to garden in their own yard. So some of the part of the community garden is to garden there, but we also want people to have an easy place to start and learn. So that's some of it. Some people have moved away. And I also believe some of it is because we've been in limbo and not knowing what's going on. There's a lot of confusion out there. It's like, is it Putting Green? Is it the city? Who should I contact and that? So I think all of those things play in, and we typically have a very high retention rate, and that changed this year. And then some new people that had inquired, or potential new people, they didn't follow through for whatever reason. And I think some of it is, if the city gets involved with this, there's marketing and education, just like, you know, everything that's new and different. We just need to get the word out there, and it's word of mouth, and when people learn about it.
What's the size of the lots?
They are 100 square feet, and they are long and narrow, four feet wide by 25 feet long.
And how long have they been? $40?
The whole time.
The whole time?
Yep.
That's the one thing I heard in the community the last couple of weeks, that people thought that was way too high. They would never pay that amount. If it was half that, they would.
So we have a sliding scale for families in need, so that is just right off the top. Anybody that just says that they are in financial need, then they get it for $20. And we are, well, we researched it when we started the garden, you know, what do you charge? And we offer a lot of amenities or did that other community gardens don't, so we thought it warranted that fee. And I've actually heard the opposite, where people will contact, and they'll tell them $40, and make, is that per month? You know, they think this is a bargain to be able to have that and have water and the tools and everything right there. So it, and you can grow easily well over $40 worth of food on your plot. So, but that's good feedback to hear, to know.
Yeah, I, I was, the other thing that kind of amazed me, Evan, not being out there for quite a while, is that's a lot of property out there. And I'm like, we got a housing issue going on, and my brain started going in a little bit. I don't know what it's zoned out there, but I was just like, could part of that be looked at for housing? I don't know. I mean, I just, something to think about. The housing study I know is out, but I haven't even had a chance to look at it, so it just came out today. I, I don't think I'm ready to decide any of this today. I just think we're, I was, I just think this is a very important decision. It's an entrance to our community. I'd like to, people said it'd be nice to have a great-looking park there for children or a small putting green, a different style of putting green for kids. I've heard that it'd be a nice area for a river entrance and something to do with our river. So I just hope that we take our time and do this right, whatever that is, and I don't know if we're ready for that tonight.
Mr. President, City Council members, I think we have to make one decision, and that is that whether or not the Putting Green is going to have a lease for that space. I mean, we have to decide. So there's no confusion in the community, and Putting Green can either, you know, tell people they're up and running or whatever. The options or proposed actions that were put before you, you know, ordering Putting Green to remove everything, ordering Putting Green only to remove certain things, leave the mini golf course intact, Park and Rec can just clean it up, leave the mini golf course intact, and Park and Rec will refurbish it entirely. I mean, those were the options that we kind of came up with. Those, I think, at this point in time, can be deferred, you know, to a point when you guys feel comfortable. Maybe you want to budget for it in 2018 for removal. Maybe you want to budget for it for refurbishment. That's up to you. The lease, because it's now past June 1, you'd probably want to have a, have a lease so that they can operate, so that's one thing. And then whether or not you want to direct the Park and Rec Director to work on the farmer's market thing, is that a good site? I don't know. And so there's a couple of things that probably could be initiated here and others that could be delayed until you have more information.
Right, right. And there was talk at the last meeting about your group wanting to do and not, to be more of a friends of the park, and then there was the discussion about continuing the lease, right?
Correct. So we, after meeting with Mr. Schmitz out there and looking at the community garden, Putting Green felt it was in the best interest of Putting Green and our gardeners and the city if we did lease that parcel. And that way, we have the liability insurance on it, we have the maintenance, and we can keep it with the feel that it is typical of a community garden. So if the city takes it on, some of the things we discussed, the wheelbarrows that we have, well, they're not commercial grade, and the fencing, you know, isn't that, and if you go anyplace else and, you know, look at these community gardens that are sponsored by the city, there's one by where I live now, St. Paul Maplewood. It's very grassroots, and they have rusty wheelbarrows, and they have fencing, and the other, that's just how community gardens operate.
Right.
And if we try to get it so sterile and so regulated, I think we're going to lose some of that. So that's why the Putting Green Board decided we would prefer to keep that under our responsibility and be able to continue the garden in that grassroots sort of way.
A comment I want to bring out is I attended the Park and Rec Commission meeting when the Putting Green representatives were there. The Park and Rec, I mean, they were also in favor of let the Putting Green Incorporated continue to do that aspect of it, the community gardens. I mean, that, we definitely have to have that tonight, correct? I mean, we should.
Should.
If we're going to lease it to them, the city attorney should draft it, get that done. I mean, I won't make that motion until we're done discussing everything else.
I agree with that. I agree that, that lease should be drawn up and that we should keep the community gardens.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Intact.
Is there, you know, since we don't, already at probably mid, coming up on mid-June here, well, not a lot of planting time left. Can, with some publicity, could you still get some of these plots filled?
You could, but it is...
Pretty late.
And then it gets frustrating, because then the frost comes, and we don't like to have frustrated gardeners. So if you get going too late, and we have, so Hardinewom put it on their Facebook page, I think, and then...
Could you do half-price now and get so few people in there?
Well, there you go. It'd be a two-for-one deal. That's what I like to see.
What if you got donated seeds and did some stuff for the food shelf?
So we do still have the four food shelf plots, so that's a part of it, and that's been a part of it. And then we also encourage our gardeners, some of them are very successful, and if they have excess produce to also donate it to the food shelf. So when you think of the community garden and you think of the food shelf, we want people that visit the food shelf to have healthy produce.
Yes.
And people in New Ulm, it's pretty cool, if you ever go there on distribution day at the food shelf, a lot of people donate fresh produce, and the people that visit really appreciate getting the tomatoes and potatoes and all of that, and not all the canned and processed food. So that's a good relationship that we are maintaining. So can I put in a little plug for the farmer's market part?
Sure.
Is that appropriate? So farmer's market, Hardinewom, worked on that when they first got going and had a lot of people come and speak to that. And I was one of the people, I was involved with it, because Putting Green, at that time, we were doing a commercial garden. Farmer's markets, you kind of want your farmer's market to be event and fun, you want families there. And so I can really imagine putting the farmer's market in that location, you're out in nature, and if you have mini golf and the families come, there'd be a place for music, they could go down on the river. You've spoken to Jim Bartles, I believe, at KNUJ, and they would be open to that, because they've been shuffling around, and there's quite a bit of space out there, that it would be a great use of that property. So I hope that that can continue to be explored.
So if we all could...
I got a question. Are you, in the last statement you made, are you still considering running the Putting Green? No. Okay.
No, just the community garden.
Just the gardens, right. That's what I thought we were talking about.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I like the idea of using it for, just what you made a comment on, but I think we need to make a decision to, even though we don't like to, but clean it up. I'd like to see everything removed, if it's all possible.
Define everything. What do you mean?
Get rid of the Putting Green, in other words.
The mini golf course?
The mini golf course, yes.
Mr. President?
Because it's getting to be a nicer, in my opinion.
But there are some things in there that they could use. There's several buildings in there that I'm sure the, would want to use. So it's like, what part do we keep and what part do we get rid of? And if we would decide, oh, yeah, maybe we do want a miniature mini golf of a recreational sort, well, there's some things there where they could use without tossing them. That sounds like, ooh, I, but yet I don't, I agree with you. I don't want it to overgrow, and it's probably could be called Thistle Park right now. That's about what's out there, but... Roger, you were going to say something?
Sir, Mr. President, I think as it's accurately represented on the agenda item, the lease provides that the nonprofit is obligated to remove those items unless the council decides otherwise.
Right.
So, and I think that's in this lease, because so often when you have a third party wanting to use city land, there's always a problem when they go, and now we've got the expense of dealing with it.
Right.
I think you raised legitimate concern about the appearance. It is the main, one of the main entryways to New Ulm. It's starting to look pretty shabby, so, but that's your call on that. As far as this lease is concerned, if you want to move forward with that tonight, as far as the community garden, I don't know what the duration would be. One of the potential items talks about, you know, having the, the markets in 2018 next year. Is this going to be a multi-year lease or just going to be a annual renewal lease potentially?
Have they thought, a one-year lease, yearly?
For the community garden part?
Right.
Yes, I mean, that's what we would like, a yearly lease, and then if you aren't happy, the city isn't happy.
And since we're, we're well into the planting season already, if the city did it 2017 and 18?
Oh, sure. We had the, go ahead, all ready to just keep it going for 2017, and I can't remember where that came from. I think that came from the City Council meeting, the previous one, perhaps, that we could just, so the community garden didn't have to stop because we were still in flux.
My question would be, I understand if you want to just go for one year, but if it, if it's going to run from June to June, I don't know that you want to get into a situation where gardeners have paid rent and somehow it's not going to be renewed in 2018.
No, no, that's what I meant. Do it for the remainder of 2017 and the entire 2018.
Well, whatever.
Calendar, you're talking about calendar year.
We'll run it the calendar year, January to January, because we typically don't even look for gardeners until, well, until it starts to warm up a little bit, nobody when it's snowing too much. And if they know that, I mean, the point is valid, if they know that their garden is going to be there, then they start planting their seeds in their house, you know, and dreaming and all the things that we like about gardening. So if we knew, I believe by January 1st, people would be able to plan accordingly.
Is your group committed enough to do, say, a five-year plan, as long as it's annually renewable? I mean, just to save paperwork every year? I mean, you still have an out. You always have one.
I know. I, I believe so.
That would make more sense, Roger, or no?
I don't know if it really matters.
Doesn't really make a lot of difference, three years?
In my opinion, I'd be great to make the motion to do this, the remainder of 2017, January 1st, December 31st, 2018. I just don't want, okay, the City Council, we change our mind, like, Les Schultz wanted to build an apartment there. Wait a minute, we got to lease gardens. We shouldn't have done that. We can cover, we can cover our tracks, do the whole 2018, and revisit it January 1, 2019. That's my take.
I'm good with that. I'm just trying to save paperwork, but we really have two decisions.
The farmer's market item will be a separate item that, that Tom Schmitz, Park and Rec Director, will bring to the City Council.
With that being said, just to get one item off the agenda, I mean, it is a separate one. I'm going to direct, move to direct the city attorney to draft a lease agreement, authorizing Putting Green Incorporated to continue operating and maintaining the community garden under the Park and Recreation Department, and authorize the city manager to sign the lease for the remainder of the 2017 year, and then January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2018.
I'll second that.
We got a motion in the second. Any more discussion on that?
The only question I have is what I heard in Putting Green say is that they're going to be a separate entity. You're going to have your own liability insurance, you're going to do everything on your own, and you're not necessarily going to be under Park and Rec.
That's the way we envision it, back to that whole wheelbarrow deal if we are under them. And we are still an entity, so Putting Green, Putting Green Inc., 501(c)(3), we continue to exist. So we would sign the lease, and then we would have the liability insurance.
At the last meeting, I remember somebody saying, we don't want the liability insurance, we want to be underneath the city. The motion was prepared to be under the city, so if you want to strike under the Park and Rec Department, then there's a standalone entity.
I'll amend that excluding the Park and Rec Department and strictly the Putting Green Incorporated.
Yep, that's fine.
That's just the Putting Green leasing land from the city, and the Park and Rec doesn't have any interest in it other than supporting it morally. Correct, for the garden itself. Great. Did you get that?
Okay. Any more discussion? Everybody understand that one? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Both know, motion carries. Okay, back to Roger. What about, what are we going to do far as, since it's coming back, that we're going to require them to clean up?
That's, the lease says that they're obligated to do it unless the city decides to handle it differently, meaning city bears part or all the costs.
So we don't have to do nothing?
If at some point the city believes that it's becoming unsightly, it's not being maintained, or you want things down, they would have to be notified of their obligation to do that.
But they don't have a lease anymore?
No, but they've got a lease that requires them to remove their property.
Right.
At the end of that lease. They've terminated the lease, and it says that get your stuff out of there so that we can use it the way we want to. But I understand that there may be part or all of it that the city wants to keep. But at some point, if it's not maintained, either we're going to be paying city employees to maintain it with everything that's there for all those structures, or not.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
I think the longer, the longer you wait to clean it up, the greater the potential for Putting Green to disappear.
Right.
And any resources they currently have at this point in time will be gone.
Right.
That's a very valid point.
That's what I was going to ask, is how long do we have to make that decision until they're not obligated anymore to do it?
Well, there really isn't a time limit on it, but I think Brian's got the most realistic point, which is if there's nobody there, this is a corporation. And if there's nobody actively willing to do what the corporation is supposed to do, it falls back on us by default.
And then by doing so, we're liable if it falls on more disrepair and somebody gets hurt on the property?
Sure, if you start having people vandalizing it or, you know, whatever, misusing the property, so...
One question I do have for the Park and Rec Director, Tom, the first, under the budget and fiscal issues, you know, we've got one local estimate for complete demolition. Removal and restoration of the mini golf course ranges from forty to fifty-five thousand. Okay? We did not get a bid just to demo it? I don't see that on here. It says restoration of the mini golf course. Restoration was included with a demo bid. So we didn't get just a bid to flatten it out?
President Schmitz, councilors, Councilor Christian, my understanding is that the lower cost bid was basically just to remove the structures above ground, leaving the concrete foundations for the golf course. And the higher bid was to pull out the concrete foundations and restore with black dirt and seed.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to also point out a few other components to think about here. We've got the mini golf course itself. We have the vegetation out there as a second item, the clubhouse and the geodesic dome. Having reviewed the site a number of times, I see no use for the clubhouse or the geodesic dome. And I think there may be an opportunity to modify the landscaping or do a little bit of trimming, so to speak, and pruning to further expose the mini golf course for you to make a decision whether or not you want to have that mini golf course maintained or eliminated. So a few more things I'd like to point out. I might recommend that, that at this point, maybe you direct Putting Green Incorporated to remove the clubhouse, the dome, and maybe someone work on the landscaping and the vegetation.
Well, Mr. President, I don't know if, you know, I don't know if Putting Green is prepared to do that, do anything to remove this. I think you'd probably get some, if they're going to hire this out, you get some mobilization expenses if they're going to do it piecemeal, to take out the shed and the dome.
Or try and sell it.
And then, you know, leave other stuff, and then are they going to be obligated to come back and remove the golf course if we don't want that? You know, I can see reasons why either remove it, clean it up, or not, if you want to keep all your options open.
Well, what I'm reading here is, we're assuming we're getting hung with it, and I don't like that idea.
Well, that's why I ask. I don't know what they're prepared to do of anything, but maybe we should find out.
So at this point, we've been waiting, kind of holding back, and we will be selling the things that the city has indicated they're not interested in. So the dome, the clubhouse, we have other items out there, and we plan on having an auction and sell the things that, like, we have a refrigerator and just a wide variety of things that we won't, we will no longer use. So we will be raising some funds that way. We don't have, I mean, maybe this will help, we don't have the funds, we don't have forty to fifty thousand dollars to do the demolition even as directed, if that's the way it goes. And I, oh, so the other thing, when you talk about, so again, demolition, so we can picture the mini golf course, right, and the cement and that, but there are also things out there that could be utilized for a park or the farmer's market. So we have lighting. So there's lighting in the parking lot. There's the parking lot. And so when you say return it to the state that it was in, or, you know, remove, well, okay, we're not obviously going to remove the, all the black dirt and that we put in, the storm ponds that are, have been installed at Putting Green's expense to clean the water before it goes into the river. The parking lot itself, I'm imagining you would want to keep that parking lot. I know the wastewater treatment plant is interested in that. And getting that infrastructure and that base for that parking lot was very expensive. So there are things out there, and bringing in all the black dirt and recontouring and getting the drainage right so it's going not directly into the river, it's going into those storm ponds. You're getting an improved piece of property compared to what it was in 2003, 2004, when it was a construction site. So that's something else to consider. And the lighting, if you decide to go into the farmer's market or something, those things could be utilized. So you really, I can't imagine, would want to say, you know, take everything out without understanding what the future could be.
So your auction would then include potentially doing everything at the Putting Green too and selling all the different displays and...
We've already had a couple of people out there that are interested in some of the things that are easy to remove, some of the things crazy enough that aren't that easy to remove, we've got an interest in. So you don't know until you get the word out. So we thought the easiest thing would be just to do an auction, get the word out that these things will be available and let people be creative. One of the public school, they're doing an outdoor environmental play area, and they're interested in some of the items because they think it would enhance the school's campus.
Potentially, at the end of the day, the only thing that would be left would be some of those underground cement structures, right?
Right, they're the above-ground, right? They're cement pads, basically, with curb.
And what?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Well, Ms. Van Hooch, I'm still not sure what the answer is from the organization. If the council directed that anything was to be removed, I don't know if your answer is just no, we're not going to do it? Or, I mean, if you're going to get paid for some of this stuff, you know, looking out for the taxpayers in New Ulm?
Yes, yes.
Did you use some of the money that you're going to get paid?
So that was, that was what our board, that's been the decision. We would use the funds that we raise for the demolition, and we would do as much as we could until the money ran out.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Yeah, sorry.
Makes sense to me.
So could we set up a little committee to work with Mr. Schmitz until something gets done?
That's kind of where I was going. That's what I was thinking too.
So we got a couple from the city council on it and kind of spearhead the thing to see where we're going to end up?
I think it makes sense just to kind of move it forward and keep going on. We don't want to wait till October, September, when it's all overgrown and ten feet high and...
I like the idea of the farmer's market thing out there in the future and things like that.
Yep.
The comment you made about building, I don't think you could ever build on it. There's a few of us know what the ground was like underneath, and it never happened. It's going to have to be used for some public purpose, I think.
Sure. I'd be willing to sit on that committee if we want to officially offer a motion to form a task force. Would that be the correct term, I would assume?
Can I ask a question?
You want to serve on it, too, Mayor?
No, I just want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Chair of the committee?
And I'm going to ask our city attorney this question. What Stacy just said about what they sell, they would be able to put that towards the value of demolition. Is it a possibility that the new lease could stake that, then with leaving the city with what's left? Because I don't want to put anybody in...
We could incorporate whatever additional terms you want to, and as long as we're going to have an agreement with them relating to the, you know, areas that's being used as a community garden. I mean, this is an issue that's just kind of hanging out there. If that much can be understood, we could incorporate that. But it sounds like the task force would then be working on deciding what particular buildings are staying or going. And I understand it might take some time until you've liquidated and gotten paid for whatever you would be selling as well. It's not like it's one item and you got a buyer that's going to close next week, so, you know.
My question for the Putting Green, if council goes this route where, okay, Putting Green is going to liquidate all their assets, sell them off the property, what kind of timeframe are you looking to organize that?
Well, we were reading the lease that said that we had ninety days. So we were thinking we needed to get it done by September 1st, if you look at that. And so we were going to do it this summer. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't getting rid of things that the city felt could be useful.
And my question to the city attorney, you're all right with that, that we're going to take it right down to the ninety day that they have to clear the site?
Well, if they've got ninety days, they've got ninety days. But I think it's a valid point, being initially, we were just talking about extending the lease for the community garden. We do have these other issues
Yes.
on the golf course. And this way, I appreciate what Ms. Van Hooch is telling us tonight. If we put it in writing, it would help to miss, eliminate any misunderstandings down the road. So the mayor raises a valid point.
Make sure we have everything
To the extent we can.
Both entities understand. That's mandatory.
So we're looking at the September 1, the ninety-day deadline, and this special committee task force, whatever, is there a timeline there? Like, I'm not going to give them until September 1st? I mean, next council meeting, you'll have it back to us?
Potentially. I don't, I don't know if there's that. I guess some complicated, Roger.
A lot of it has been discussed with the Park and Rec Commission already and the Park and Rec Board. Or maybe if Tom wants to make a comment, how much time do you think you need?
President and councilors, I think the real decision is the golf course itself. The clubhouse is portable, the dome is portable, the vegetation can be changed in a matter of days or, you know, pruned or eliminated. I think the question is the golf course.
Again, though, if we say you'll have it back to us by the next council meeting, is two weeks enough time?
Yes.
I think so too. So if you're already on the Park and Rec, do you want to serve on that committee?
Give the word.
Well, I'll volunteer, but I'm just like, you're already on the...
I don't have a problem with that.
Are you and both of us? If you, we should probably have two.
I can go along, I'm on the Park and Rec Board.
Do you want to be on it?
No, that's fine.
Network.
I'm trying to figure out how to make the motion to put that all into words.
Like we said.
Well, while you're thinking of that, I just have had comments of people, from people saying that they don't really want us to, see us take on another park or another of the golf Putting Green course. I guess I'd kind of like to weigh in that I would like to see it removed just because I think we've had quite a few parks that we're trying to maintain now, and this wasn't in our park plan. And I just think that we, we have enough to keep up with at this point, that taking on another park. I like the idea of the farmer's market if they can get that moved out there, but I don't know if we need to supply a park with that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take a stab at putting it all in. I'm going to move that the city attorney draft, that one we did already, the lease agreement, the city attorney drafts some type of letter to the Putting Green Incorporated that they will incorporate all their assets no later than September 1st. And do we want in there that the remainder balance, if they can't get it done, is forwarded to the city? Any, let's say they come up with five thousand, does that go to the city, or can we do that if it's not enough to take care of it?
If they, well, whatever they're going to agree to. If, if they agree, first off, my understanding is that they will be selling items that are movable. So they're not totally restoring this property back to the condition that it was.
Right.
One of the things, or some of the things that Ms. Van Hooch raises, which are valid points, is when you look at all of the improvements, do you want the lighting to go? Do you want the gravel in the driveway to get plowed under? If you want to leave that intact, I think they need to know what they're supposed to do.
Well, that's what I think the committee should really sit down and discuss.
And see, and I can't...
Benefits us and what...
Maybe what we should do is...
Two motions instead?
Yeah, maybe what we should do is, I mean, it would be nice to incorporate this into the community garden agreement, but that needs to get put into place. Maybe we need to have a second agreement then that's going to deal with the Putting Green and the golf course.
Okay.
Because I just, that, if we're not going to know until the next meeting, we should get the first one done.
Okay, so we leave the motion alone. That one's already been voted on.
Yep. So maybe we just need a motion to create a task force to address Putting Green concerns.
And then have it back on the agenda.
Submit recommendations back to the council.
Well, no one's actually made one yet.
I think we should make a motion. I think a motion should be made to, number one, grant the Putting Green...
That's done.
That's done.
That's done and voted on.
All right.
Did that.
Did, missed that one.
So should we just keep it simple, that a motion to create the subcommittee of Les Schultz and myself with the Park and Rec Director and report back to the council in two weeks, next council meeting, excuse me? Ever. Even, it don't have to rush.
Roger being on that committee, maybe? Roger, do you want to be in on, should you be in on that?
Well, I'm going to need to be either hire Tom Borg. You're going to need to be probably getting the information. Otherwise, yeah, it gets to be difficult to...
Along with the city attorney or the assistant city attorney?
I'll second that.
We got a motion to second, as discussed. Everybody figures it out. Any more discussion? I guess we're creating a committee. Anyway, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 4F, consider a motion to receive a notice of the government, Governor Dayton has signed ominous bill, or tax bill, containing authorization for the city of New Ulm to expand the local government option sales tax authority with a fourteen-point-eight million debt cap. Brian?
Yeah, there was question on the last day of the legislative session whether or not the governor would sign. There was some political jacking that went on, and by the end of the final day, the governor decided not to, I don't know, play chicken with the legislature at this point in time. And he just signed it late in the, early in the evening or late in the day. So that, that bill was passed, and the city's local option sales tax expansion authority was included in that. And at this point in time, the discussion about where, where we go from here, because, I mean, we've held off on deciding whether or not we start projects in 2020 or 2021 or 2018. And I had a conversation with Council President Schmitz, and we said, well, why don't we get it on the agenda and start that conversation and see if, you know, how long it's going to take before we come to a conclusion on what our next step is? So what you have before you, basically, is the notification that, that our local option sales tax has been expanded. And the difference between reauthorized and expanded, if you'll notice, North Mankato's was reauthorized. And that, that's because their last sales tax was nine million dollars, and their new sales tax is nine million dollars. Ours was nine million dollars, and now it's fourteen-point-eight, so that's an expanded sales tax authorization. That's the difference between three or four of the different sales tax laws that were in that bill. It just basically boils down to when do you want to start the new projects that were identified through the renew process? One of the, you know, things that most other communities did not have in their sales tax legislation back in 1999 was that any money collected in excess of the sales tax debt service could be put into a fund so it could replace roofs, parking lots, anything that was built or purchased with the original project. So we can't do anything outside of that realm, so. And we've been using that money to replace compressors that have gone bad, mostly big, big-ticket items. Or do you want to forego the last three years of that fund, which is about two million dollars, maybe two and a half million dollars, and, and pay off that debt and start the renew projects that we had just gone through and identified in the, in the legislation and get them going in 2018, 2019, or 2020, or whenever you want to start those? You can phase those in, you can kind of do whatever you want. But I don't believe what you can do is take the expansion sales tax revenue to pay the old debt. You know, you can't keep the old debt and collect that money to pay the old debt. You have to have the new debt and pay that money to the new debt. So there's no crossing over that. So it's either extend it out to 2020 or cut it short. And Nicole here in, in finance put together, you know, just a little spreadsheet. We can just kind of take a look at that if you would. And that pretty well kind of just tells you with not a lot of certainty, because we don't know if we're going to need to do the roof on a specific year or if we, or if we have to... you know, we still don't know the life of many of these things. But on the left-hand side, you'll see it's titled if bonds are called twelve, one, twenty seventeen. And the right-hand side is if original tax continues until twenty twenty. On the left-hand column, you'll see we have a current balance of four point two million dollars. We've got some things, uh, that are ordered and, and going to use some of that funds. You've got the revenue stream coming in. So on December first of twenty seventeen, you still end up with about four point two seven million dollars. If you were to pay the debt on December first, which is two thou, or two million thirty thousand dollars, you got some revenue on interest, uh, sales tax receipts and sales, uh, tax received in twenty-eight. You end up with about two and a half million dollars in your fund. Then if you look at twenty eighteen, nineteen and twenty, we plan to do the civic center roof, which is estimated to be about eight hundred thousand dollars, which gets the fund down to one point eight million dollars. It's not going to grow anymore, except from minor interest if it sits there. The civic center roof is by far the biggest one. But the community center roof on the new section was also brand new and that's going to need replacing, you know, or in, you know, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years still also. And the field house roof, if I'm not mistaken, was, was new also. So if you take those two things out, you end up in the hole about eight hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. If you continue it to twenty twenty and those things happen, so apples and apples, uh, you collect all the revenue through the year twenty twenty, uh, December of twenty twenty. By the end of twenty twenty and you add in those other projects, which the ice refrigeration system is by far the largest item, one point seven million dollars. And I don't know how long that's going to last, I just don't know. Uh, maybe it lasts forty years, I just don't have a clue. The remaining balance is two point four million dollars, just under two point four million dollars, which then can be kept in that fund for five, ten, fifteen years to pay for more compressors and all the other stuff that, uh, might go wrong in the next five, ten, fifteen years. Once that fund is depleted, it's on the tax roll. And I, you know, everybody understands that. So the difference between the two choices is you run out of the, you run out of your fund money. You know, potentially twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, you know, potentially, I don't know. Uh, it's an assumption. Or you run, uh, you run out of it in twenty years, you know, twenty years from now, depending on what happens. I don't know. So those are, those are the, are the two, uh, ends of the spectrum that you have before you. You know, it always comes back to money, no matter what decision, you know, the council makes here. Whether it's, uh, shareos at twenty thousand dollars a year to repaint or, or this particular fund, or when you start the new, uh, renew projects, it boils down to what's the impact on, on the taxpayer. And one process impacts the taxpayer sooner than the other. And, uh, the choice is up to the city council what they want to do. But I think that conversation needs to start and so we get a better understanding of what the, you know, what the reality is of what we're attempting to do. Because I think Park and Rec has gone on, uh, the Park and Rec Commission has gone on record as wanting to initiate the projects in twenty eighteen as soon as possible. We're just pointing out that that's great, but there are financial implications to doing that. And we've had this discussion with renew, you know, uh, two years ago of, of what the impacts of this could be. But now we have the decision. We, the, the authorization is there and it's up to the city council when they want to initiate this, whether it's twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, that's close enough, or do you want to go to the final year twenty twenty? So you have, uh, on your issue sheet, all the information, uh, the kind of recaps, what we've gone over. You know, it's the general review of the information and it's here to kind of start the conversation.
Am I also correct, Brian, that one of the reasons we went this year to the legislature with the renewal process is because of the fact that maybe it wouldn't have passed or wouldn't have gotten signed? So we had another year to.
That's correct. It almost didn't pass this time. But, uh, if we didn't get it this year, we'd have twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then after twenty twenty. You know.
Be brand new.
You'd have to start all over, I think. But, uh, yeah, that was the point. You just never knew what the legislature was going to do, so you tried to get in as soon as you possibly can, just in case like last year, they didn't pass any ominous tax bill. So, uh.
Let's, one of the advantages too, that by approving, getting it approved now, we don't end up with a one-year gap. If we'd have went to twenty twenty, then we'd actually had to go to twenty twenty-one. So that was another reason we put it in there. I guess where I'm coming from is.
We actually would have had a whole year to, to not collect taxes and we'd had to start all over again with the, with the extension, or not extension, it'd be a brand new sales tax. So yeah, that's correct, that's the reason we did it early.
I guess, just where I'm leaning from is I really don't want to burden the taxpayers in the years to come with any surprise. So, I mean, I know it's important to try to get things going, but I made the comment earlier on to, uh, ending it, that would have this way too soon, I will not be in favor of. I just cannot see initial, or you know, down the road dumping it on the taxpayer.
I'm, I'm going to piggy, piggyback on the president's comment. I'm all for the renew project, I know Park and Rec wants to be going. But in a nutshell, you know, the end of two thousand seventeen, if we do have our repairs being negative three-quarter million, you take it to the two, two twelve and twenty, no impact really on the taxpayer and a two point three million dollar remaining balance. Are we making that decision this evening or not?
I don't, I think we need to discuss it somewhere along the line, we'll end up making a decision. But that's why I asked, Brian, I talked about, let's just put something on, let's get some talking going.
Yeah.
We won't have to make a decision, I'm just stating where I'm at, you're stating where you're at. Now we got somebody else going to state where he's at. Go ahead.
Mr. President and councilors, Bob Skillings, I was part of the renew committee. I have a question, uh, I see on, on this worksheet that you handed out, it says if bonds called December first, twenty seventeen, could we call the bonds December first, twenty eighteen?
Yes, but that, then there'd be more interest to pay on it, it's just a matter of what interest you're going to pay at what point.
But the, but the long-term impact on the, on the, um, tax, the property taxpayer might be less if we wait.
Yes.
And, and with that, with that year, could we do some of the pre-planning that needs to happen with projects before we issue bonds?
The pre-planning expenses have to be, I believe, within nine, you know, within ninety days of the bond issue, isn't it? Ninety days? We had that conversation. Sixty days? So, you know, the, the answer to that is if you.
Sixty days of the date that you make that resolution.
Alright.
So we could make the resolution in April and it would go back to.
Okay.
January's expenses, or not January, the two months.
Two months, alright, got it. So we'd have to adopt that resolution that we've, you know, done, I think, every year for the, for the, um, for the street projects, when we do that bonding. So we go back and capture expenses.
One comment I do want to bring up, at, at one of the Park and Rec meetings, I had asked President, or, Park and Rec Director Tom Schmitz, if he had any funding available in their budget to do whatever he had to do if they wanted to start the project, you know, that the plan, specification design, which has no impact on the tax bill, and I, he may come up now and comment on that. I mean, if we went out to two thousand eighteen, if he had any money in his budget, would that impact anything?
Then you couldn't pay yourself back unless you do that resolution.
Using Park and Rec money, budgeted this year.
Where I was going, yeah.
Right.
President Schmitz and councilors, that would be a decision, uh, for you to make. Um, the planning and design expenses for these projects can be funded by sales tax monies. Sales tax revenue. And if you want planning and architectural services and so on to begin prior to use, you know, being eligible for sales tax expenses, that would be Park and Rec fund expenses. And again, your decision to make at any future budget year.
But Mr. President, as I hear this, you can't use the funds from Park and Rec now and expect that you're going to be reimbursing those a year and a half or two years from now.
No, no, I understand.
The money is gone.
But what I'm getting at, if the Park and Rec Commission decides we're not going to fix Harmon Park this year, we're going to change our mind, that budget money is going to go to the plans and specs for whatever is prioritized. That's what I'm getting at. Let's say you choose to, the Park and Rec Commission decides, no, we want to move forward, plans and specs for the Johnson Park. But this year's budgeted money is used, whatever jockeying he does or council permits him to do to start their process and not touching the sales tax issue.
On the, you're, you're saying take it, that project would then be taken out of the.
The city, no, no.
You would just do the preliminary.
Correct, the preliminary.
It'd never get reimbursed for it.
Right, if Park and Rec decides we're going to spend fifty-five thousand this year to get those plans and specs started for the Johnson Park, I'm going to use, that's coming out of their budget this year. No, it will not be reimbursed, I understand it. But if they wanted to get their ball rolling, not lose an entire year, and I understand where they're at with the tournaments and whatnot coming up at Johnson Park.
It certainly is possible, but it's a city council decision, not a Park and Rec Commission decision.
So what you're saying then, Dave, and on the other hand, though, is we would still have to end it soon.
Well, you're buying almost a year, another year of sales tax collecting.
But that's not really going to put us in a good financial sta, standing yet. I like the idea of having the two point four million dollars at the end, in reserves. Anybody else?
Well, right now is, I think we should talk about it a little bit and table it a little bit and know where we're at in a year yet and then bringing it back. You know, I served on the committee, we worked pretty hard on this and we were pushing for it. We were also looking that we could get lower interest rates if we started the construction process earlier and, and to keep the costs. But I like the idea about entertaining to start putting requests for proposals or designs out there, cause we don't know what.
And prioritizing and.
Put a priority on.
Construction projects are not going to go down in price.
But, but we're not going to, we're probably going to be doing this in more than one bill. Or, you know, one, more than one bonding, I mean, if we could stagger it. But the biggest thing is when we're going to end it and.
Can we break this up, Brian?
We'll have to break that.
Yeah, we'll have to. Well, we don't have to, but if, anytime you spend more than ten million dollars on a bond issue or you receive ten, ten million dollars or more, uh, they need to be bank qualified. And bank qualified, according to the, you know, federal laws, basically means only the big banks can bid on these things. And when you go from a pool of thirty potential bidders down to four, they know that and their interest rates are higher. And so if, if we with our three, three point two million dollars with our normal street, uh, bonding, plus maybe the utilities might do two million dollars for something, that's five. And so if you want to stay under the ten, you could do a five one year and a five the next year and eight the next year. I mean, you can, you can cut this up into all different pieces if you want to. That's not a problem. Uh, you would just schedule your, your projects to be that way. It's just.
But you're going to collect the, the sales tax revenue the same every year, even if you just bond for four million or fourteen?
Correct, correct, you're going to collect, just like we did the first, uh, uh, sales tax. We, we're going to put that into a, now a special account. And any money left over after you pay the debt service sits there, okay? And as you accumulate your projects over, you know, say you do it over five years, you build all your projects out that you got all the revenue here, but your expenses in, in year twenty are going to be higher because you delayed some projects to year five. And so now you've got this money that you can then pay off that higher debt in those later years. So it, financially, it works out, it's not a problem. So if we want to do ten million or under and phase in the projects, that, that's worked, that's not a problem.
But that still affects our bottom line, cause we ended it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you do, you have to end the current one before you can do the next one.
And that's before construction starts on the new one? It's not, cause.
Well, sixty days.
Before you sell the bond.
Before you sell.
Before you sell the bond. I mean, you could pay it off and sell the bond on the same day, but the point is you got to pay the one off before you can sell the other one.
We could get a jump start if we took Park and Rec money and did the preliminary designs and review and put our priorities in place and then I think we need to talk about that and what, what is the first priority and then what the design fees are to put those dollars in place and then I know we got a couple of things time sensitive that we're talking about in the community also too, so.
And I just want to clarify, I, I probably, I jump ahead because I already know the answer on some of these things, but the reason, the reason when you pay off the old debt and you can create the new debt, isn't necessarily because you can't have the old debt sitting out there. If we want to use taxes to pay that off, I, I don't know there's any big problem. The problem is you're using the same revenue stream to pay both debts and you can't do that. It's not going to work. So the, the issue is, is since you, you only have one revenue stream, you have to pay the one off before you can start paying the other one off. So that's why you have to pay it off. You can't spend money twice. I learned that once. Doesn't work.
So, um, we don't have an analysis if we held off to, um, paying it off in two thousand eighteen?
Well, you do, because the twelve thirty-one, twenty eighteen balances there. You would just have to take off those future pro, on this side, on the right, uh, right-hand side? That breaks it down when you go farther, the end of twenty eighteen, the end of twenty nineteen.
This would be a negative and that'd be a positive.
Yeah. So this is really the, probably the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario. And then anything in between, that, whatever the council wants to do.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Council members. In speaking with some of my fellow renew members, you know, we spent pretty much a year, uh, meeting at least twice a month, spending many hours, uh, debating the projects and reviewing the projects and strategizing on how we best could come up with, uh, community assets that benefit our community and the region. In speaking with some of those members recently, uh, it would be our hope that we could be, have some input into your decisions, uh, coming forward here in the next, you know, month or so. And so maybe having a work session together or something like that would be, I guess, our request.
But the comment, I want the mayor made the comment, you know, I know all the work that was put into it and I appreciate all the work that was put into it. But the bottom line is, is when this work was all put into it. The idea was is to get it, try to get it passed, whether it's this year, next year or the following year. We never once said, and I brought it up at those meetings we had prior to this, that I was not in support of ending it soon. And he said, well, that decision doesn't have to be made because we just want to get it passed. Well, now we got it passed and now we're, we're back to the same thing, let's end it, you know? And I guess.
Mr. President, and, and I don't know if the committee would say, let's end it right now. I, I, you know, it, that, when you look at the numbers, that's maybe not the best decision. But I, but the in-between might be a better decision. And you factor in higher interest rates, you factor in inflation on projects, you know, you factor in some of those things and maybe it is, it would be better to, to start in twenty eighteen or nineteen instead of waiting until twenty twenty. We don't know.
As long as I had my mouth going earlier, I really do believe that members, or at least some members of the renew commission or committee should be involved in, in maybe not necessarily in the decision, cause I suppose that has to be counselled. But.
because I suppose that has to be counsel, but making a strong recommendation one way or the other to the council members. So I think Renew should be part of it. I don't think I officially ever said thank you to all the hours and hours that were spent by the Renew Committee. So, yeah, they should be involved.
It could be a work session or a public hearing.
Absolutely.
Could be either one.
And I think we should have the finance director there to, you know, looking at the numbers and.
I would anticipate they would bring public finance in because they did some preliminary analysis on the financial side of it. Now that we're getting more serious about it, we need to.
And they could answer more of those questions about the limitations as far as reimbursement than I'm knowledgeable of.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, even when we're talking about that, you know, I'd like to know that if we did end it early and, you know, we're looking at the numbers, you know, because when we're always budgeting, you know, how much taxes are going to go up and stuff like that, we could look at that and see if we ended it early, you know, we're looking at a two percent or five percent increase, you know, to make up that differences, you know, just, there's numbers involved.
We may even bring up some questions that need to be addressed by the, by their bond council. You know, I don't know what that question might be right now, but I know, city attorney and I have had discussions with our bond council already on the finer details of bonding and what you can and can't do, so.
Okay, but I appreciate the time that you've taken, you know, you've put out the roof, the ice refrigeration system, you know, things of that, the big ticket items, you know, I think we should take a hard double look again to make sure we've got our bases covered there too for.
Right, and we've been utilizing just the big ticket items. We don't, we don't use the renew, not the renew, but the sales tax money for a doorknob or, you know, fifty dollar item. We don't do that. It's just the really big stuff, operational stuff. Yeah, a door got, doorknob got broke. That's part of operations. It's just the big stuff.
Well, I think the object of putting on the agenda tonight served its purpose to get some talk going and we've done it. So we aren't going to be making any decisions tonight anyway, so we can actually, if everybody's satisfied, move on.
Do we want a decision of having a public meeting at some point or a work session? Do we want that decision made tonight on this particular topic? Or would you prefer to add it to?
We could make it an agenda item in the future.
Could make it, yeah. Do you have an idea when that timeline might be, Mr. Chair? Or a recommendation of when we'd want to do that, July, August? I think in budget time for sure. I mean, this is a budget issue potentially.
We just started the twenty eighteen budgeting process too, so, you know, another month or month and a half into it, we will know more definitely where Park and Rec's budget sits or where their balance is, is actually at.
But I think this might take one, maybe two meetings for the Renew Committee to meet and we have to allow a little time to have public finance involved and.
So put it off to August.
August, first meeting in August, maybe? Potentially, right in that area?
August would be good because it would give, that there's any, anything that impacts the twenty eighteen budget.
Correct.
There would still be time to put it back.
Yes. So.
You want to do the, like, after the second?
You don't have a motion, so I'm going to offer a motion to.
First part of August is kind of cluttered with activities.
Something going on there, yeah, I was going to say that.
Maybe the second meeting in August.
Well, the president can call a special meeting if you think we need to.
Or we can meet in Sturgis.
We can meet in Sturgis.
So I'm going to offer a motion to accept the report.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, accept the report, any more discussion? See none. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes no, motion carries. Item five A. Consider the following actions associated with the submittal of the Housing Tax Credit Application to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency by the Community Housing Development Corporation for the construction of a fifty-five unit affordable housing in the former New Ulm Middle School building located at fifteen North State Street. Resolution expressing the intent to establish the administrative of the Housing Tax Increment Financing District. Resolution adopting the Housing Needs Initiative Action Plan preparing by, prepared by the Housing Initiative Needs, Housing Needs Initiative for the City of New Ulm. Resolution authorizing the submittal of a letter of support for the project. Mr. Graumanns.
Mr. President, city councilors, we have representatives of the Community Housing Development Corporation here, Heidi Rothman and Elizabeth Flannery, is that correct? And I believe they're wanting to, or willing to, do an overview of their projects so that it can be a good reminder of what they're proposing to do and what the final project will look like.
Great. Mr. President, council members, thank you. I, we'd really like to thank you for considering our requests this evening and for having us here tonight to speak to it. Heidi Rothman is here with me. I'm Elizabeth Flannery. I'm the president of Community Housing Development Corporation. And we were asked to just give a kind of a brief introduction of our company, of our proposed project and the timeline for our project, and just an explanation of the requests in front of you this evening. So Community Housing Development Corporation, we're a nonprofit affordable housing real estate development company. We were founded in nineteen ninety-one with a specific mission to preserve existing affordable housing and to create new opportunities for all kinds of affordable housing options. We were founded in nineteen ninety-one, as I said. Since then, we have developed over four thousand units of affordable housing in Minnesota, primarily in the seven county metro area. We are based in Minneapolis and our office has been at the same location since nineteen ninety-one. But we have several properties in greater Minnesota, Hibbing, Little Falls, Hutchinson. So our properties, we are a long-term owner and manager. We don't, we, we are in it for the long term because the core mission of our company is preservation and long-term preservation. We have a strong commitment to quality design and quality management over time. And we have a portfolio that is very healthy and is a good representation of that commitment in the communities that we're located. As you know and as you've seen in your packet, we're proposing to redevelop the former New Ulm Middle School. Our project would be the historic preservation and adaptive reuse of that building, converting it into multifamily affordable, affordable apartments. The plan right now, as it's being designed, consists of fifty-five units total. There's twelve one bedrooms, thirty-three two bedrooms, and ten three bedrooms. It's a very, it really converts to apartments nicely. The apartments are, there's a lot of floor plans, very unique design, I think really nice units. So it's, the building does lend itself to this reuse really nicely. The primary financing tools that we're planning to use are low-income housing tax credits and both federal and state historic tax credits, which we're in the process of securing at this time. The schedule, we are, the state of Minnesota, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has a request for proposals every year in June and that is when they allocate their low-income housing tax credits and the rest of the resources. So we're preparing our application for this project at this time and that is the reason for our request to you right now. Speaking to the schedule briefly, what happens is we submit our application, the state considers all the proposals. The tax credits are highly competitive and the process of applying is really intense. And so we work really hard to put together as competitive of a proposal as we can. We have a lot of experience doing this and we've had a lot of success in this. We believe this project is very competitive and will point very favorably. So the state generally makes their decisions in October. So what would happen is we would submit in June and work through that process with the state underwriters. They make their decisions in October and then we work with our lenders, which would be the tax credit investors and the other lenders to close it. And ideally, we'd be able to close on all of the financing sometime maybe next April. It's typically four to six months working on the closing process and construction start, which in Minnesota generally makes sense to start in the spring of the year. Although with a project like this where we're not actually going into the ground, we could potentially start sooner than that. So that's our proposed schedule. And what you have before you is a request really, really for support of our application to the state. There are certain requirements that the state has. The first one that we're asking for your support on is a threshold letter and it's just kind of, it's the threshold requirement that the state has from any applicant. And really what that is, is a general letter of support, which you have a sample in your packet. And it just confirms meeting the basic project criteria for greater Minnesota, which is really that the community is in support of this and the community has defined a need for the project. That is the baseline criteria that the state will consider applications. The second thing in there is approval of a community development plan. And this is specific also to the competitiveness of our application and a requirement from Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. They want this to be part of a community plan and really have community involvement in the decision. And so Heidi Rothman and our, of our organization and some consultants have been working with the community on developing that plan and that is before you tonight for approval. That would add significantly to the probability of a successful application for us. The third thing is the intent to establish a TIF district. And the purpose of this is threefold. It helps significantly again in our application. It has, it helps us in our financial readiness to proceed. There are about fifty different pointing criterias and that's a significant one. But it also goes to the general project feasibility and is a real strong statement of community support. So those are the three items before you tonight and Heidi and I are here and available and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody having questions?
I guess I've got one right off the top. What's Plan B? I mean, you said straight out, this is a competitive grant.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't see you outlining anything on that. So it's a given that you'll pretty much receive something?
No, that's an excellent question. It's not a given. It is a competitive process, although, I mean, part of what we bring to the table is our experience being, you know, producing successful applications. So Plan B, we always have a Plan B and probably a Plan C. Plan B, if we're not successful, so they are limited and so three things can happen, which we think will receive our full tax credit application, but it's possible that we won't depending on what the competition is. And we don't know at this point, you know, what other applications are going in or how it's going to compete against the rest of them. We could get a partial allocation, which is, which is a really good thing because once you get a partial allocation, you're kind of in the queue for the remainder. It's just a limited resource at the state level and so a partial allocation would mean we would go in in the winter for a supplemental allocation and that would probably push our timeline about six months later. We have typically, you know, it's not uncommon for a project to go in two rounds and sometimes even three rounds. Three rounds is unusual, this project. If we, we may not get an allocation this time and we, then what we would do is resubmit at this time next year and we would be a year behind. But that's what we've negotiated with the current owners in our purchase agreement is for that potentiality because it is, it is real. We feel strongly that we're going to be in a good position this time next year. We feel strongly we'll be starting construction, but that's a possibility.
Any other questions?
Just, I'm fine entertaining a TIF because we've never received any tax money on the property, you know, prior, you know. So, I mean, and we need housing, you know, so, I mean, those are all, so I'm in support in that aspect. But just wanted to know what the other side was, if there was a Plan B in.
And Brian, you had some concerns?
Yeah, the only, Mr. President, city councilors, the only item that, I guess, was expressed to me was that it actually is found in the mayor's letter, mayor's correspondence. And that, this part was actually written by the city staff so we can change any words we want to change on there. It's actually found on the very last page of that, that letter. And there's, it would be page one forty-nine of the council packet. And it just basically says, "The city of New Ulm has confirmed that the State Street Department project will contribute to the goals of the cooperative development plan dated May twenty-third, twenty seventeen. The plan included the following six approaches to address identified housing needs." The first one says, "Provide additional tax credit housing through the development of the State Street project." That's fine. "Produce a mix of new housing in the Milford Heights." Produce, provide, promote, and promote. If you actually look at the plan, it doesn't necessarily use the words, you know, produce. Produce is kind of a stronger word, saying we're going to do it. We're going to produce that product. And I think for number two, we want to consider a mix of new housing because the EDA has not made that decision yet. And item number three, we want to consider a mix of new housing units in Garden Terrace Three, if we do Garden Terrace Three project, you know. It's, I just say tone those three words down. So two, three, and four would be consider instead of produce or provide. That softens them up from our perspective because we're not committing to them. And it actually matches then the report that follows where they talk about the actual, these projects and I, you know, they use things like work with the EDA, you know. It doesn't say where EDA is going to do it. So it, it matches the report by just changing those words and that's all I would, I would change in that letter.
Mr. President, I understand there's three different action items that the council would need to consider and I don't want to jump around. That was the last one. The second one, the resolution, and I think it's referring to the same thing. All it states is that the city council adopts the Housing Needs Initiative Action Plan prepared by the HNI as the city's plan. I haven't seen this plan.
It was attached. It's the one that came after the mayor's letter, that Housing Needs Initiative Action Plan on page one fifty. And that's, that's why I say that's the plan that the local chamber, if you remember the, they broke off into industrial and housing and different segments. This group then looked at our housing and came up with a plan. And many of the things that they talk about are, you know, I mean, they're, they're good things.
Well, it's, it's a very lengthy document and I don't know if everyone in the council has read it and if you're really ready to say this is going to be the plan because somebody at some point down the road is going to say, you better act in accordance with your plan. And I just want, I mean, I do not want to hold this project up. I understand what you're saying. It's an excellent idea. You're on a timeline. But I also think the council needs to know what it's committing to here.
Right.
Be comfortable with that.
On page four of the plan, it'd be page one fifty-four of your packet, at the very bottom, this is what I was going, trying to explain, was that B says, "Explore with the EDA the development and building of new tax credit units adjacent to Broadway House." Well, that, you know, we can explore that. That's, that's not a problem. But in the mayor's letter, it says, "We'll actually do it."
Do it, yeah.
And I don't think that's what the intent is. I think the intent is these issues that they bring up that we should look at. I'm kind of okay with looking at them, but it doesn't commit us to anything. Much less the EDA because the city council can't commit the EDA to anything at this point in time because they're a separate entity. But yeah, I think you raised the point is that this really is not, it's not a city staff-driven plan. It's, it's a separate group's concept of what housing should look like in the city of New Ulm.
Mary Ellen Domeyer, nine sixteen South Jefferson Street and a member of the Housing Needs Initiative Task Force that arose out of the combined chamber and the New Ulm Area Foundation Retreat, Visioning Retreat last November. And in working with not just the tax credit project for which we want support immediately because that application has to go in soon, we also took a look at what some other communities have done when they've applied for tax credit. So modeling our proposal here, and you'll also see in there that it's subject to change as we develop the, review the new twenty seventeen study that just came out. It is subject to change, but at this point, to say that, yep, we can live with this and we are submitting it because it has to go through with the application that they will be providing. And if you've got other questions. And if you've got other questions as to why some of the material is in there, Dan is here. He's chair of that particular committee. And Heather is here and she's been working on it. And we've had other representation throughout the community that's a part of this whole effort. Many letters of support have come forth to get this particular tax credit project done. It's been 20 years since there's been a tax credit project here. We're down to 20 units. So we stand a good chance in getting this approved because of the need that's been identified, if that helps.
I'm just, again, I don't want to interrupt, but the page 21, it's, the city will provide staff time. City will consider, I mean, I think it's the same thing that the city manager was talking about. There are some commitments in this. And if everyone on the council's had an opportunity to review it and is comfortable with it, it's just fine. I don't know, you know, I understand you've got a short timetable, but I don't know how long we've been working on this, you know, if it's coming in front of you tonight. So, anyway, just want to make sure you're comfortable with what you're committing to.
I'm Dan Brom. I'm 1014 Upper Wall High and I am the chairman of HNI. And I was one of the parties that helped draft the plan. The only thing I wanted to add to what Mary Ellen has already said is that the basis of the plan that was developed really started from the 2012 housing study that was provided. We weren't fortunate enough to have the 2017 study because it was just released this past week. So many of the needs that were addressed in this study have been around for at least the last five years. So it's not like these issues that are being raised now are something new. And I think it's imperative on us to consider that. I have no problem in changing some of the wording if, if the council is skittish about the word commitment. But I think it doesn't change the fact of the housing crisis that we're in at this time and what this particular project going forward would mean for our community. So I'd ask that you consider that. Because at this point, if, if that plan isn't included with their application, I think the chances of its success probably are diminished greatly.
I'll just add one more postscript. Where it comes to city will be involved, almost every project that's in there, obviously in some manner, shape, or form is going to require EDA involvement or zoning adjustment or replating of this, that, or the other thing. So from that perspective, obviously the city will be involved in some aspect or another and it means city staff. We are attempting to demonstrate that not only the city as a governance entity, but the citizens of New Ulm, through the business community and so forth, that everyone is behind this particular project.
Was there, is it possible to state, have the council say that they agree with the goals of the plan without adopting the entire plan verbatim? I mean, because you need this for your application.
Accept the plan. I saw that the word adopt was in here, but if you will accept the plan as a tool for us to use going forward in concert with the 2017 study just received.
It's the same thing.
Or a resolution supporting the plan even?
Yes.
I think is acceptable. I mean, just as, just your acknowledgement of support.
Because that's a big difference from adopting the plan.
Dave Schneberg, Community Development Director. I've been involved in this process, in the preparation of plan along with Heather Bergel from City Staff. I'm very comfortable with what we've presented for you this evening. What we have attempted to do is simply provide some different directions that we will explore. We may not have the staff to do all of these things. We probably don't have the financial resources to do all these things. But what we've done is identify areas that we feel deserve further exploration and investigation on the part of the staff. And we are not envisioning that we're adding staff to do these things. These are activities that would be undertaken by the staff that the city currently has.
Roger, could we also include, you know, accept the plan, which can be modified from time to time by the city council? I mean, that...
Well, we, I think we've got to have some else. I'm looking at, you know, page 25 of the plan. City Council will establish the TIF district November 2017. I mean, do you want to, I mean, I think doing the TIF for this project makes a lot of sense. But are you committing to this tonight? I mean, there's some real specific obligations here. And I understand, Dave, if you need this, you know, it's one of the things that's on the agenda, is the question of the TIF.
And so what we're doing with regards to tax increment financing, it's kind of a two-step process. And we're taking step one tonight by indicating that if they are successful in securing the tax credit financing, that we will in fact then establish a tax increment financing district. And the numbers that you find on the report have all been prepared by the city's financial consultant. So we've gone through the same process to date that we would typically do for a tax increment project. So nothing has changed from that standpoint. But we're gonna stop at this point and then if they're successful, we would pick up the tax increment district. And in the resolution, there is sufficient language that it is still subject to the council's approval. And we would also have a development agreement for this project. So it's going to be really no different than any other TIF districts. Normally what we do is we do everything on one night. What we're doing instead with this project is we're doing it in two different time periods, potentially.
As Larry made the comment, I think we would support it. I don't think there's any chance that we wouldn't. So that's, first step wouldn't be out of line.
Well, I certainly appreciate this project. This is, we are at a crisis stage, as has already been stated tonight, with housing in our community. There's been talk of needing 500 housing units that we desperately need in our community, not only for our workforce, but our people that want to move into our community. I'm glad this project is here. I support this project that's here. And I'm gonna go ahead and get this moving because we want this project here. So I'm gonna offer the first motion, offering a resolution, or excuse me, offering a resolution waive the reading, expressing the city and New Ulm's intent to establish and administer a housing TIF district for the construction of 55 units of affordable housing in the former New Ulm Middle School Building located at 15 North State Street.
Second.
We got a motion, a second offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
I have one more question for the city attorney. I know he's concerned with that. On the next one, which he said is very, waive the reading, can you use accept the Housing Needs Initiative Plan?
Yes, that makes a big difference.
Okay, so I'm gonna offer a resolution, waive the reading, accepting the Housing Needs Initiative Plan prepared by the Housing Needs Initiative for the city of New Ulm.
And that'll be sufficient for your purposes?
Yes, second.
We got a motion, a second offer resolution, waived reading, according to the changes. Any more discussion?
Are we gonna bring that back at a later date once we've had more time to review it and maybe have Roger go through?
Oh, I think we're in a lot of meetings on this.
Sure. Because you're gonna get the other report.
Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item number C.
I'll take a stab at that one, too. I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading to authorize the submittal of a letter of support for the construction of 55 units of affordable housing in the former middle school building located at 15 North State Street.
Second.
With the inclusion of consider instead of...
With the changes.
Term consider instead of provide on two, three, and four of that letter?
Yes, oh, yes. I'm okay with that.
Are we okay with that? It's fine. Second.
We have a motion and a second offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Does that mean I have to sign it or...
Okay.
If that's your job. If it's the mayor's report.
Thank you for coming to it.
Mayor letter? All right. Go ahead, Brian.
I meant, everything we talked about, specific things, but I meant to remind myself that within that plan, you saw that we were offering a local financial incentive for this, for this project of $20,000 and that's a TIF-funded thing. Of the other things that we could possibly do was, if I can find it now, building permit fee adjustment, plan review fee adjustment, parkland dedication fee, curb cut fee, stormwater Of those five things, I don't know that we want to do the building permit fee. I know we, I think we've done a plan review fee reduction because it was a big project and it seemed like it was, you know, appropriate. Parkland dedication fee is, is the council interested in, I mean, you think the prior use of it was, I don't know, 300 kids or something or, you know, and they could go to parks, you know, this is gonna be 55 apartments. It's, all the parks that, and not all the parks, but the parks that are close to the project have all been developed for years. It's not like this is a new subdivision with a new park that you take that new housing parkland dedication fee and then build a new park. So the question is, is there anything you want to do with those? My recommendation, if you're gonna do anything, the park dedication fee had the most likely result of that, of a potential reduction of all of the five. I know Parker Rec Director would probably not encourage that, but, but the bottom line is, all the parks around that facility have been developed for, you know, decades, if not 150 years. And that's $19,250. You know, maybe you leave 5,000 in it and...
This is something that could come back to us at a later date.
Potentially reduce it.
Dave Schneberg, Community Development Director. The city manager indicated that there was a $20,000 amount that could be provided to the project as a local contribution. I think the thought was that that 20,000 would be used to reduce some of the expenses that are being talked about right now. So anything you would do would then further reduce those local, local costs.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
When, when do you have to know about any additional?
So for purposes of the resolution, we have $20,000 in there. So for purposes of our application next week, that's all that we need. We would come back to you then when we go through the site plan review process and we can revisit that if you want to discuss it further, which would probably be, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go on to item 5B. Consider resolution approving the further implementation of a local performance measurements system development by the city, by the council on local results and innovations.
I'll offer that resolution. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Offer resolution, waive the reading, start.
I think we've, we've liked it, so I don't see a need to stop it.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5C. Consider a motion to schedule a joint city council public utility commission informational meeting for June 20, 2017 at 3:30 PM to discuss the auditing, or audited financial statements for the year ending December 31, 2016.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls, nope, motion carries. Item 5D. Consider resolution approving the MINDOT master partnership contract agreement number 1028038.
Mr. President, this is a rather lengthy agreement that takes care of any transactions between the state of Minnesota, MINDOT, and the city of New Ulm with regard to grants that have to do with transportation projects such as state aid monies or federal monies in circumstances such as that. There are certain material testing and other requirements that the state takes care of us for on a, on a fee basis. And that agreement that we have in place right now, I believe, was a five-year agreement due to expire. So they've extended a new agreement, master partnership agreement. If there's any work orders that take place outside of those kind of normal issues, that would be negotiated and brought back to the city council as well. Some of those might be like if there was a flooding situation or something and we needed some help. So it's pretty standard. They're, they've been very good to work with.
Since we do have it expiring June 30, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the state of Minnesota partnership contract and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement for an in behalf of the city of New Ulm and authorize the city engineer to negotiate work order contracts pursuant to the master contract.
Second.
We got a motion, a second offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5E. Consider motion authorize a request for proposals to create an ADA transition plan.
Mr. President, in this case, we'd like authorization from the city council to go out for requests for proposals to create a, a formal ADA transition plan. These, these plans are necessary to secure any funding for transportation improvements from state or federal funding. They're something that's required for any, any city that has more than 55 employees and have public infrastructures that fall under the ADA federal requirements. So I would recommend that we move ahead with the request for proposals and we bring back any costs or results that we receive from those requests.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Do you have a timeline on that?
It's included in the, I think it's probably the, in August, they'd have to look at the proposal. There's a, there's a submittal date in there.
So it'll come back to us sometime in August or September.
Probably September.
Any more discussion? Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls, nope, motion carries. Item 5F. Consider resolution authorizing the request from the heart of New Ulm downtown action team to reconfigure the benches at the centers and Minnesota Street intersections.
Mr. Brady Golden is here. I think he's the next person up to talk on behalf of Cindy Winters.
It'd be a pretty easy lift compared to what you had to decide already. I don't know. I don't know.
So I think you have the proposal in front of you with the images. This was the number one request. We did a survey of the downtown business owners. The number one item on there was to increase green space and seating in the downtown district. I think green space is a much more difficult lift than adding additional seating. So we looked at what the seating that already existed and being conscious of taxpayer spending. These benches, benches are located below the mall. They're facing the parking ramp. I don't think they get utilized. If you look at them, there's very little wear and tear on them. I don't think a lot of people sit there and watch the pigeons. So all we're requesting is to move those benches into the busiest, one of the busiest corners downtown and reconfigure them with an additional table to increase, increase seating and give people an opportunity to enjoy meal downtown, maybe work on a laptop, have a cup of coffee, what have you. We put together a sketch. I looked at a couple, one vendor or a couple vendors. It's about $400 for the table. That won't cost the city any money. We've got funding set up for that. I don't know if the city has worked with, you know, you get your park equipment, if you have an additional vendor you prefer us to work with or can get some deal on that, we'd be open to that. It's a 36-inch table and the height will be appropriate. We have about eight feet width of space to use in the existing area and the benches are each two feet long and it's a three-foot table. are each two feet long and it's a three-foot table. So, we've got some wiggle room there, about a foot and a half at least. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I was in attendance at the, at this meeting. Granted, again, it is like a pilot project, a test project. It's not something we're ordering in for the whole downtown area. I actually did like the idea. Questioned the city engineer. I had looked at it. We still maintain our ADA on the sidewalk, whatnot. It's not really chewing up any more properties. They're just kind of relighting and turning. They discussed moving the pots, the plants, Christmas tree issues. The one question, who is doing the installation of the benches and tables? I did not want to answer that at that meeting. If the city's going to do it, or has that been?
I think that would be up to the council to decide.
I don't think that's a real big project to put in a couple benches, so.
We have done them in the past.
I've talked to Mr. Curry, and he stated that, you know, taking them off of where they're currently bolted down, and they're going to have to probably repair the concrete underneath those chairs because you can't have the bolts sticking up. And then bolting them down at the new location is not a very large project. It's going to take somebody a little bit of time, and that's, and, and equipment. Not a, not a big deal. I'm more concerned, I think, with the, probably the design or the style and the construction materials of the table because I think, you know, when you look at the, the bars that have their seating area outside, you know, they're required to take their, you know, literally supposed to take their chairs in and bring them out and so they, they don't sit out there 24 hours a day. If this table were to sit out there 24 hours a day, first, you know, it's got to be bolted to the concrete also. But I think it also has to be able to take somebody standing on it when, you know, at 3:00 in the morning. And so, my concern is we don't put, like in the picture, a post table with four, you know, struts out on, on the concrete. That's, that's probably going to last a week before somebody makes it lean one direction or another. So, my concern is, do we want, you know, color, design, style, or construction materials to enter into this discussion? Because I don't want to go out there and get wrecked within three days either. So, they got to be sturdy.
Do they have any issues with that? Was city approved?
Yeah. Like I said, what we looked at, or what I found was the park catalog. It's the website where they sell equipment that's made for this sort of load. It has a base with the mounting brackets on it already. This would be similar quality that you'd put in a park of any sense. So, I'm sure it can handle loads of somebody standing on it. I understand your concerns. But the image on there was just a representation. It wasn't the actual quality or build of the table that we were going to put in the project.
Then I would just recommend that maybe the, the design that you pick, you know, maybe gets run past the city engineer and say, yeah, it looks like a sturdy piece and be done with it.
And then the only thing, other thing was the color too. We just picked the red table because we found that image online. They come in multiple different colors. I know the benches and the metal rails are green. I don't know if we want to match that or if you have any input on that, you can go black and make it neutral or...
I think that's something that Mr. Kahler can work through.
Mr. Kahler's into colors.
Between him and the mayor, I think they'll come up with...
I think they can too.
I sense we're going to have an interesting staff meeting tomorrow.
I think they could be alternate colors.
No, I've been periodically joking about these benches since I've been a city councilor nine years ago. It's like, why? Who put these in? Whoever sits at them to look at a parking lot with pigeons? I just, so I'm glad they're getting out of there and getting some use because I, I've asked the, the property owners across the street, have you ever seen anybody in that bench ever? No. So, there's two of them there. I'm glad they're getting moved and get some good use, so.
And I should just want to include too, the intent of this project is to build upon this in future dates if this becomes a successful configuration. And we, that's why we looked at this. I think there's other opportunities that we could reconfigure the existing benches
I agree.
on multiple corners to make a more of a conversational setting in the future. But this is intended to be a pilot run of that future concept.
With that being, offer the resolution waive the reading allowing the reconfiguration of the benches at Center and Minnesota Street intersection and allowing for two tables to be installed as proposed in the project description, and also allowing the city engineer to go over with the, the committee, the type of table, and also the color design.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Offer resolution waived reading.
I have a question. Does, is there an ordinance in the city of Noam that the benches, benches have to be facing a certain way? There was something about naming and putting a name on some benches a few years ago. And is that some, is there an ordinance on that?
I'm not aware of anything. Mr. Kahler?
Not that I'm aware of.
You're making that up.
Maybe, no, I'm not.
I'd rather get it now than have a special meeting because we didn't, we didn't find an ordinance.
We'll blame the city attorney.
All right. No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5G. Consider resolution approving the request from Gene...
How do you say that?
Prochnyak. Okay. Brown County Auditor, Treasurer, to vacate the easement area between Lot 9 and Lot 10, Block 2, Lakeside Village Edition.
Seems pretty self-explanatory. I don't have any concerns. I'm going to offer the resolution waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Offer resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
Anybody else does.
Mr. President, there are some recommended conditions that the, the property owners would bill, actually pull a building permit.
We'll record the resolution, yeah, authorizing the easement and easement areas effective upon the issuance of the building permit. So, with that, I'll add that to my motion.
No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6A. Consider acceptance of a list of claims paid and approval of list of claims to be paid. List of claims paid in amount of $977,439.23 and approval of list of claims to be paid in amount of $550,119.59.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Second. We got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. On favor say aye.
Aye.
All's nope, motion carries. All right, we have a addendum for tonight, so we need a motion to...
I'll offer motion to suspend the rules for action on the addendum.
Second. We got a motion in a second to suspend the rules for the action on the addendum. On favor say aye.
Aye.
All's nope, motion carries. Okay. The motion number one A, consider a motion to receive a report from the Joint Police, Fire, Animal Control, Storage, Building Project. Mr. Grauman.
Mr. President, city councilors, as you note that the project was approved on December 20th of 2016. It consisted of a three-function building, police department storage, fire department storage, and city animal control, which is our kennel for stray dogs and those that are picked up by the police department. Well, that's not true either. By the animal control officer just happens to be a police officer. After the project was started, it was brought to our attention that the desired property was less than 1,000 feet from a residentially zoned area. City Code 914 Sub 7 Commercial Kennel Regulations basically states in A, all buildings occupied by a commercial kennel shall be located at least 1,000 feet from the boundary of any residential district except the RA agricultural zone. The property we're looking at is in an RA zone, but across the street to the west is a R1 residential zone. In order to meet this requirement, the building would have to be moved 400 feet east. If you look on the map, past the sewer lift station that's found there, which is, which puts it in the flood fringe area. At the site, it would, basically wouldn't work for the full three-function building. The city recently required two commercial kennels to meet that 1,000-foot city code requirement. So, we felt we had to abide by it also. Other sites we looked at to shift the kennel to was move the, the entire project to the compost, to the compost dog pound battery trap area. And that would have eaten up a very large amount of the city land used by the battery. Option two, move to city-owned land in the cemetery, which was not seriously considered. These are just areas that are 1,000 feet away from R1s. Option three, move the project to the wastewater treatment facility and not a desired outcome from a PUC perspective, and nor mine because of the, we don't know what the future brings as far as wastewater treatment, and we may need that land for that particular purpose. And then option four, keep the storage, the fire and police at the preferred site and split off the kennel and locate it at the existing dog pound, which is at the compost dog pound battery and trap area. That's what the plan was. The site for the kennel just had the dirt removed and the gravel placed. And the building that houses the police storage and fire storage is getting pretty well close to being finished, although there are a few things left to do. The unanticipated additional costs at that project, although the site was perceived as flat, it did have a slope and it required an additional 8,000 in fill to level the site out. So, that either didn't bury the building half in the ground or, you know, have a slope coming out the door. The new dog pound at the location at the compost dog pound battery trap area was identified to be close enough to the existing water source, which is found at the battery dog pound building. To keep the utilities down, the building was set back in line with the existing battery dog pound building and allows easy access from the existing driveway that would then split the two buildings. The remaining green area, approximately 2.25 acres, is still available for other uses. The battery building roadway is located on approximately six tenths of an acre. The issues that we were confronted with was relocate the dog pound portion of the project to meet the city yard, and it's probably will result in slight additional cost. Relocate the entire storage and dog pound to acceptable locations, not really finding one that meets the criteria that we, we own and meets the setbacks from residential, as you note, the ones I pointed out. And the budgetary fiscal issues. The original budget was $175,000. The final anticipated police-fire building budget is $154,000, which is just a storied shed for both of those entities. With, in that cost is 8,000 additional costs for the dirt due to the slope fill. The estimated cost of the dog, dog pound is approximately $32,000. We have two quotes on that. And with those two dollar figures added together, we're projected to be $11,000 over budget, of which 8,000 is the cost from the slope and the fill. So, we're about $3,000 over budget by splitting those two, that building into two instead of having one building. The maps that you have, the one is compost dog kennel, battery trap area, shows an aerial view. The 22 by 50 outline, that, there's a little bump out. That's where the dog kennel would be located. The remaining 2.25 acres of green space, and then you've got approximately six tenths of an acre for the roadway and the battery building. You'll see, well, about where the six in the dot is, there's a roof line that jets out to the left. That's the existing dog kennel, dog pound. The, the battery is looking at, you know, removing that roof line and area and fixing up some things that are found within that area. The next map is just an exploded view of the problem we ran into with the fireplace storied shed location and where the dog pound kennel would be required to be located, to be 1,000 feet away approximately from the residential zone, just west of it. So, that is the recap of what happened. I did have conversation with John Fritchie because he came in and was talking about the removing and fixing up of the, the battery facility. And, you know, I've had, I think, one call, and I think you guys, maybe the city council has had more calls or, or more people contact you saying that they didn't appreciate the, they're not being included in the discussion. Error on our part, we figured it was city property. The battery is on city property. The trap range is on city property. Didn't see it as a, as a monumental issue given all the extra green space that's located out there that can be used. So, that's, that's where we find ourselves today. And if we don't want it, want that facility right there, it can be moved. It just adds cost. But it has to stay somewhere in that, on that city property and probably close to the road.
Comment, I guess, that I've talked to different people on it. One thing is, we're spending $154,000 for a storied shed. Technically had to go out on sealed bids, correct? Because it's over $100,000.
Not necessarily.
Isn't it over $100,000 sealed bids?
We acted as a general contractor and we, you know, break those things out. So, we did the plumbing, just like we do the EDA houses. We act as a general and we just get the concrete guy bid. We get the electrical bid. We get the...
So, because, I guess, since it was in the budget for $175,000, the city council has no more say is what really took place. We spent $154,000 on a storied shed that never came back to the city council for any approving of any bids. I mean, if the fire department wants a $40,000 fire truck and they budget for it, they come back to us and say, now we're going to go out and buy this truck. Now, we just put up $154,000 building without no say whatsoever from the city council.
Well, the motion that was authorized was authorize city staff to proceed in design and construction of a joint fire, police, and animal control building.
But that was the budget.
What's that?
That was during budget time.
Nope. That was the motion that was done on December 20th, 2016.
I think we're, the concern that I would have as a city councilor is on that day, we approved one building, three functions. And, and I literally found out from somebody just simply calling me saying, do you know they're building a dog park and, or dog pound? And I'm like, hmm, separate from the other building. I'm like, no, we, we didn't approve that. We approved one building with three functions. I think at that stage when we found out or the city staff found out we couldn't have it as close to that area as we could because of, of the ordinance, potential violation, at that point, it should have came back to us with potential options. Would we have agreed with what the city staff did in the outcome of this? Maybe, probably. But I don't like the fact the city staff made the decision to just create a whole new plan without us knowing anything about it, nothing. I, I have real problems with that, real problems with that. We didn't approve that. We approved one building.
Because we could have, I would assume it's Roger's comment, but I would assume somewhere along the line, had it been brought back, we could say, okay, let's change the ordinance and allow the dog...
We could have looked at that, absolutely.
...to be built within that distance as long as we notified the people upfront. We could have probably done it. I mean, this thousand feet, I don't know what they did with the, the dog kennel. We got down for Valley Street there. It's not a dog kennel. It's a, what do you call it?
Pubs play line.
Yeah.
Humane society.
Humane society. We got dogs down there too.
Yeah.
And that's dang well within a couple hundred feet of people. So, I mean, I think we could have probably did something.
Yeah. The Humane Society purchased that building in 2003. The kennel ordinance was adopted in December of 2012. So, that's where the 1,000-foot setback came. So, prior to that time, there was no standard. Matter of fact, prior to that time, kennels were only allowed in a commercial zoning district. And so, we expanded it to include industrial zoning districts as well to try to get it, you know, away from residential areas.
But if we wanted to right now, we could, what I'm saying is, we could change the ordinance and put it right... ordinance and put it right where the, the building is.
If you wanted to modify the, you can modify any ordinance that you want to.
Right.
I think our, the staff position on that particular topic was, very recently, we just required two other kennels to abide by the 1,000 foot, and we felt it was a little hypocriti- hypoc-
Hypocritical.
Hypocritical.
There you go.
To say, you guys got to abide by the 1,000, but we're going to change the rules, so we don't have to, and we just went like, you know, we got a little ethic issue here, you know, do we abide by our own rules, or do we make other people do it, but we don't? And so, we just said, well, we, we forced those people to do the 1,000 feet, what are our options? And, and, you know, Councilor Schultz, you know, may be right, he, we brought it back, made a dialogue, and I said, yeah, there's only one option we have, and that's putting it at, at the compost site with the battery. Now the question is, where on that site could we put it that would make it better?
And we, I would have guessed, we, somebody would have said, has anybody talked to the battery about this, what does M and R paving have, have they have any concerns about their compost issue, um, trap range, do they have any concerns about where we could put, I mean, I would guess some of that would have came up in our conversation, which maybe would have alleviated this particular agenda item tonight, that people are not happy about how this process happened, that they weren't involved in the decision-making, and, and it's, hindsight's always better, but my biggest concern is that we approved one building, and now we're approving, or now we're building two, and I, I, that we didn't approve that.
We have one gentleman standing here.
We have a gentleman here.
Battery.
Tony Art, New One Battery, authorized at the last meeting to come and speak with you, Mr. President and council. Our concern was the fact that this dog pound was going to be placed in its location as of right now, taking away space for us to safely practice hitch and harness horses. We, at the very least, as Councilor Schultz has admitted, would have liked to have been approached as to a compromise. Using the current facility that's there, expanding on it, or putting any sort of addition would have probably been more beneficial. Unfortunately, over Memorial Weekend, inside of the mayor of all people also, one of our members was injured, and he very easily could have been also while trying to avoid this foundation that was placed without any knowledge to anyone. So we just wanted to come, come before you and express our concern that this had happened without, at the very least, being approached and finding a solution collectively. That's all I have to say on it, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Well, I'll take full responsibility for the error in communicating this back, it's, it was not our intent to keep anybody out of the loop, it was our intent to do what we were instructed to do. Again, as, as you noted, satisfy three particular things, we ran into a problem with one. There's really only one location in the city that works, and that's all I can say, I'm sorry.
Where, where is this building project at, where's the, the fire, fire building, if we want to call it that, where, where's that project at in the development?
That's probably pretty well, almost done, what, 90% elevated, or?
Yeah, it's by overhead doors and liner panel on the inside.
Yep.
And where's the dog pound?
The dog pound just has the gravel foundation poured, poured in place, so that when the concrete comes, you can, you can put it on top of that. We can, we can move it to a different location, but it's, we're, we're trying to hook up to the water-
Sure.
-in the existing building. You know, I can, I can move it over towards the, the road that goes into the, the compost, it just means I'm going to have to have 150 feet of water pipe to deal with.
Did we make the police-fire building smaller by reducing the cost?
Al, did we reduce the size of the storage facility?
Building fish, no, we didn't, it's still the 100 by 50. The dog pound was going to take up additional space in the police side of the storage building, so they gained space in storage.
So is the dog pound still the same size that was originally signed as well? That stayed the same? Or did it, it was supposed to be?
Yes, it's, the dog pound itself is 12 by 50, with a 10-foot overhang for the dog run.
Okay.
So the, the footprint of the building is 22 by 50 for part of it.
Yeah.
And the rest of the, the end of it was going to be used for cats.
Did you tell me, sir, that the little white dots, the dog training, is that the dog training, little kennels, not little kennels, but little buildings, that they are going to be moved?
Well, yeah, the, if you notice where the fire- police storage shed is, there's some white stuff just to the lower right hand, across the, or the, the bike path, that's the training equipment, and they've got these white boxes over by the, the road that goes into the compost area. Not really sure what those are used for, other than maybe hiding stuff, so the dogs can smell, but they can be moved anywhere, anywhere on our property, they could be moved or where the other exercise equipment is already located, so that can be, you know, removed, and then there's some white things further out there that can be removed.
Tony Art, New One Battery, to go along with what I said earlier, if you would like, we are more than willing to give up any option that we were given to secure that additional space onto that shed, if you want to do an expansion onto the current facility. I don't know what it takes to move roadways and such, it's just a gravel loop path per se, but it might save costs to just add on to the existing facility for the function that you need. We're more than willing to work with you in that respect, too. It just, it gets difficult with having horses and harnesses and teams, and then a, a building in the middle of practice space to allow safe functioning, so. If that's a thing that would help you not only reduce costs, but be willing to work with, we are willing to give up that space that was already discussed with us to use as additional storage to have as a expansion of the current facility.
While you're up there, may I just ask a question? Is any of the remaining two, you know, over two acres usable for what your purposes are? Why is it that one section is the only section that is interested, you're interested in?
So, if any of you are familiar with horses, the fact that they can see the entrance points to either a stable or any sort of pasture land makes them, if you want to say, jittery and less easier to control, because their main purpose after they're done doing work of any kind is to retreat back to those places where there's food and water, and if you want to say, safety, to either move about freely or to be able to provide those nourishments. If you were to come out the back end of where the stables are right now, you would be requiring the horses to see that spot and having people put in a position where they're going to constantly be holding those horses back from trying to re-enter that. Now, there is a gate there to help dissuade that, but we're talking 3,000 to 4,000 pound animals, and a little pin on a gate isn't going to hold them back from getting back in there. The other function is the fact that when you come out where the garage door is, all of the equipment is right inside there, so we can just simply bring it straight out, make a quick right turn, and it's all staged right there. The horses then, when we get going, are driven straight forward and take a left past that shed, I don't know, it used to be where the people would take the license plates numbers down when the city still had the facility. And then we make our left turn, go onto the roadway, and proceed out to the parade routes or wherever we need to go with our equipment using horses. I hope that-
There is some value in giving some thought to, just as Tony mentioned, maybe just remodeling and, and rebuilding our current kennel. Is that an option?
I think it's an option. It was the one that we decided not to do when it first came to the city council, but if that's what you want us to do.
Well, I think before, that was a nice idea, having that three in that building, but we don't have that option anymore. So now does it make sense to back up and say, let's just remodel what we have and make it look nice, and, and, and we're small, it's too small, and, and it certainly couldn't use an expansion, I guess I, I don't know if the animal control officer's not here, but it'd be interesting to hear what-
I believe it's, it's going to have to be, it's not just a remodel job, it's double, if not triple the size of what we currently have.
And everything has to be torn out, because the concrete and everything is-
Yeah, it's all, all shot, so. You know, I mean, that's, that's what led us to say, let's, let's do this, because it's substandard, now if you tear it all out and expand it, you know, anything can be done.
Sure.
It's just how much that would cost compared to new construction.
We don't, we've not signed a contract to build this, or have we?
Nope.
We couldn't, um, take a look at that as an option, if my fellow councilors think that that's appropriate, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there to see what that would look like.
You already have a foundation in place, right?
No, what's in place is, uh, black dirt removed and gravel, and that was done by city crews, so.
We could pull, pull back yet, and still maybe go that route, but at least look at, that's an option, I don't know.
Well, we can take a look at it, I mean-
What do you, what the rest do you think?
We'll do whatever you want us to do.
I guess I agree, if, I mean, things we aren't out anything, if we want to look at other options, what might be possible out there to accommodate the battery in a better manner on that piece of property? Maybe engage them in a conversation of what might work.
I think that's why we're, the subject is here tonight, was, we need to communicate, and we haven't been communicating with anybody, you know, on this project, as far as city council or anybody, so. I think now, if we're going to communicate, we better start.
Well, if we would avoid the possibility of seeing Mr. Fritchie on the ground again, I'd like you to do that, just take another look and see, is there a different or better location? And you may come up and say-
Might not be, right.
This is the only logical place.
Yeah.
Because you've got water and all of those other expenses, so this may be what you end up saying, this is the best place, but the battery would have a chance to put their fore sense in and-
So I'm going to offer, so we can keep this moving tonight, I'd offer a motion to city staff, take a second look at the placement of the dog pound kennel, and out in that same location, but bring back to us an option or two as soon as they can, so I don't, I know we don't want to hold up on this too long.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion? See you in a minute. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pools, no?
And Mr. Chair, as long as we're on this topic, so I want to make sure we're real clear on this, we do have our, our city attorney here, are we correct in what we're stating, that if it's a major change, that that should come back in front of the council?
Well, I think the problem is how you define major change.
Right. And then, is it the general person on the street considering it a major change is the test, or?
It's whatever you think is a major change, and you obviously think it is, and you're going from one building to two, that's understandable, but there's not, there's no bright line or easy definition. They're making decisions every day.
Sometimes I've heard people use that, if you approach a normal citizen on the street, excuse me, would they consider that a major change, yes or no? An average person would say, yes, that should come back in front of the council, but otherwise, it's the city, it's our chair of the board that would make that decision, correct? Could be either way?
Well, it's the council that's going to decide if, if you've got concerns about modifications that are made, I think, you know, staff all the time will make minor adjustments as they're implementing something, and at what point is it no longer minor, and-
In the past, we, when we've done, you know, large projects, you know, even $5 million project, you sit back, and I've asked the council for this, is for authorization for 5% of the project to be able to make change orders-
Absolutely.
-on the day, on the minute that you have to make them, without stopping the project. Well, 5% on a, on a $5 million project, it's just a chunk of change, you know, but 5% on this project would have been-
But we do-
$10,000, you know.
We just did it not that long ago on a fire truck for $1,400, made change orders. I mean, it has happened. So we do make change orders when we go out for bids or whatever, on a heck of a lot less than-
Yeah, but I believe that change order was already done already, just like many of the other ones that-
But at least it's brought up before the council. You know?
Try and do better.
Okay, no more business. Meeting adjourned.